All right, so I'm gonna struggle here a bit because I don't think I've done this recital. Do I just go ahead and read it word for word? Is that the, is that deal? Okay, so the meeting's called to order at 8:10 a.m. And I have some remarks here that I'm going to read. This is for the COVID-19 state of emergency. I would like to make here for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 in an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19 coronavirus, and because state and/or local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing. The public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend the meeting in person. The meeting will be streamed live on the district's website. And then, um, do I open it up for public comment now?
No, we'll do it at that time. You can just ask if we have anybody available, and I'll just note that we have not received any public comments.
Okay, so it sounds like there's no public comment. And with that, um, do we move on to the agenda?
Uh, the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll go into roll call.
Okay, so if you could join in from the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And with that, we'll do the roll call.
Sure. Good morning, Vice President Estrada. And just for the record, I'll note that President Powell is online, so I'll go ahead and start with that. Good morning, President Powell. You are muted.
Yeah, good morning. I'm here.
Thank you. Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I haven't heard of any additions, deletions, adjustments to the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. I don't see anybody jumping to their feet to rush the podium, so I guess we're okay with as published.
Perfect. And so with that, now is it public comment?
Correct, and I'll just ask, we do have a couple of participants online. I recognize three as consultants. We do have a fourth one. If there is anyone online via Zoom that would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature, and I will go ahead and provide you with speaking authority. I'll give it a second. Okay, for the record, I do not see anybody raising hand. If at any time in the future, any member of the public online would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you. And we have none.
Okay, moving on to approval of the consent calendar, is there any item that the board would like to pull, or is there a motion approved?
I'll move approval.
That was Bianco. And Vice President Estrada, just for the record, because we do have President Powell online, we would need to do roll call votes for all actions today.
Can we have a roll call?
Sure. President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
That's 5-0.
Okay, moving on to presentations and recognitions, anniversaries.
We have one. There for Michael.
Okay, here it is. Okay, Michael. How do you pronounce that last name?
Stensel.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
You're okay. We have a long thing to read, so...
I'm gonna, yeah, let me, let me read it here. So, Michael Stensel, chemist, 30 years. Mike started his career with the district in October of 1991 as a laboratory technician and worked his way up to chemist. He is primarily responsible for ion chromatography analysis, but is always willing to help with any analysis when needed. He trains new hires on lab procedures and performs laboratory reporting. He has been instrumental in setting up the laboratory's data management system. He helps the laboratory process, uh, process thousands of samples related to the evaluation of treatment processes such as for arsenic and chromium 6. Mike and his wife Dana live in Palm Desert with their three children, Jacob, Matthew, and Eric. They love to travel, they like horseback riding and camping. His contributions are vital for the success of CBWD Laboratory. Mike, Mike's, uh, listens to new approaches and techniques with an open mind, which creates an environment that harbors teamwork. He is of great value to the laboratory and the environmental services department.
Hey, where's your white coat?
Yeah, the white coat.
All right, sir.
I remember when I, when I first went to the laboratory, I remember even the white coat, and that was in the old, which was a lot slimmer.
All right, you want to explain what ion chromatography is? 30 seconds, you're last.
Yeah, basically, it's a separations analysis. You pass the water sample with chloride, fluoride, nitrate through a column, and the columns will slow down the different species. So they'll come through the column, at the end of the column at different times, and then they get detected. Depending on what the peak shape looks like, we can quantify exactly how much fluoride, nitrate.
I know this is a public meeting, but have you ever found anything you didn't expect?
Uh, yes. You know, sometimes if the flow is not adjusted correctly, you know, you can get the peaks coming closer together, and you just have to make small adjustments to separate them.
All right.
Typically.
Nice color.
30 years, that's great.
Yeah, congratulations.
That's awesome, yeah, thank you. Okay, and then with that, we're gonna move on to informational reports.
Vice President Estrada, if I may ask you to pause for a moment. It, it appears we are having some streaming difficulties, and unfortunately, under AB 361, one of the requirements is, is that we are, if we are having technical issues where members of the public cannot view us, we do need to take a pause to address those issues. So it seems that our YouTube stream is not working properly. So if we can take about a five-minute pause, I do apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There we go. Okay, Mr. Vice President, we have addressed the issue. The Zoom link is still working, so we are able to go forward with it. Members of the public who would like to participate can join the Zoom meeting. The notice or the information to join Zoom is available on our website, and it is posted on the agenda, therefore we are in compliance with AB 361.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're gonna continue with, we're in communications. I think we had one, and so that's been noted.
Right.
And we're gonna move on to informational reports. First item is with, well, it looks like it's Carrie. So, go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Thank you all for working through these developer fee cost of service study informational items with me. Today, we're gonna start out with the sanitation capacity charge study. So if we can bring that one up. Perfect, okay. So the next slide, please. So, in previous board meetings, I've presented on the water system backup facility charge, the supplemental water supply charge, which we're now transitioning to the offset fee. But for right now, I'm gonna talk about the sanitation capacity charge. So this is a third of the three charges that we are updating as part of this overall developer fee cost of service study. So, go to the next. So, the sanitation capacity charge is a separate charge from the other two fees. It's the charge that pays for the regional sewer facilities. So, um, gravity sewer pipelines, force mains, lift stations, and treatment plant upgrades or treatment plant additions. So it's a one-time charge that's assessed against new development to mitigate impacts from the development. There's two components to the sanitation capacity charge. There's a collection system component and then a treatment facilities component, and I'll get into a little more detail on that. The last capacity charge study for this specific item was updated in 2012, and for the calculation, we're using the buy-in method, which is consistent with previous studies, and it's also consistent with the water system backup facility charge study. The buy-in method, again, it recognizes the value of connecting to existing regional facilities. So, um, what went into calculating the sanitation capacity charge was that we looked at the facilities that were built within the last 20 years using SEC fees or sanitation capacity charge fees and the associated capacity. We adjusted the dollars to 2021. We did include a 2% escalation rate, and then we depreciated the costs. So again, we, there's two components. There's the collection and treatment, and by dividing it up into those two components, it gives us the flexibility to be able to credit developers for the fee based on the type of facility that they might contribute to our system. So if they build a regional pipeline, we're able to give them credit, and then they don't have to pay the fee. The table here shows the life cycle values that we used in the depreciation calculations, and so that's just for reference. So, I'm just gonna get right to the point in an effort to reduce the time that it might take to go through all of this. I'm happy to go through it all, but based upon the calculations and the data, this was the outcome of everything that we did. So the collection component came in at 2748, which is just a little bit higher than the 2012 collection component. The treatment component came in at 1785, which is less than the treatment component from 2012. So the overall proposed sanitation capacity charge for 2021 is $4,533 as compared to what it is currently at $4,851. So if there's any, I, and there's a lot of detail in the subsequent slides, and I'm happy to go through that, or I'm happy to answer questions, or I can stop here. Looking for the level of detail that all of you would like.
I guess, let me just make sure I'm reading this correctly. It's actually a reduction?
It is a reduction, yes. And the driving, the reason, the main reason for the reduction is in the treatment component. There's, um, the unit demand, um, the amount of flows that are coming, um, you know, from the individual homes is reduced because there's, you know, conservation going on inside the homes, and so we're not seeing as much flow coming to the treatment plants. So, so that, um, the unit demand has decreased, um, which, when you carry that through the calculation, it causes the treatment component to go down. The collection component increased due to some of the larger regional facilities that we constructed in, like, the last 10 years. We built some pretty large gravity sewer pipelines, some lift stations, um, so that's the reason for, for that slight increase or moderate increase.
Okay, um, let me, let me just ask, let me just ask this, to try to see if, through the process of brainstorming, I can, I can try to figure this out, but... So I'm gonna start off with the comment about, um, this whole analysis is based on facilities that have already been built.
Right.
So there's, there's a, there's a known cost that, that we've spent money on.
Right.
And, um, so that number doesn't change, but you're saying you can add, you can add more units to it, so it...
Correct.
So that's what lowers the, the buy-in?
Yeah, I can, I can just go to the next slide, that might help explain. Sorry, there's a lot of detail here, but the number that you wanna key in on is the one in the bottom right of each table. So the calculated unit demand for 2021 is 192.8, and that's based on the number, you know, and then if you look at the number next to it, the tributary EDU is 125,000 EDUs. So if you compare that to the 2012 numbers, the tributary EDU was 105,000 EDUs, and the unit demand was 240. So you can see the flows have gone down, and we have more EDU capacity.
Okay, it makes sense to me now. I mean, you're spreading it over more users, so...
Right.
The cost per unit is lower.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so it's creating a lot more users, so, so there's a lot more people that can buy into it. So, which makes sense, I mean, that makes sense with, which I think is what the board was trying to make a point about last time when we, when we spoke, so...
Which, oh, which is the next presentation, and we'll talk about that.
Sure. Okay, well, any other comments on this part, or are you gonna go through the, or did you wanna stop for a bit?
I can, I can keep going if you'd like, it's just, um, there's just additional detail on how we came up, um, it's just the background and how we came up with the numbers. Yes, this shows the unit costs. If you just key in on the last three lines, pretty much, of each table, you can see that for the total pipe, well, or for the force mains, the pipes you kinda have to look at individually, some increased, some decreased in terms of the unit demands. But the force mains, you can see the unit demand increased. Force mains are a part of the collection system, and also the lift station unit demand increased, if, if you just compare those two numbers in yellow there. So that's, that's what's driving the, um, the increase on the collection component. And so then this is when we added the dollars to, to the values. So, again, you can see that for the lift stations, the very last number there in yellow in 2021, it increased to 447 from 345 in 2012. And then if you look, you have to just kinda go line by line and look at all the various pipes, there's probably about half that increased and half that decreased. So that plays into some of the increases in the collection component as well. And then this goes back to the treatment component, these are all the numbers that go into calculating the treatment component. We talked about, um, the unit demand already, the 192, um, and then the other key component is the depreciated adjusted cost that went down from 2012. So, that's just how it compares, the 1785 to the 2436. So that's, I mean, that's basically it. That was, you know, this is just the benefits of the proposed 2021 sanitation capacity charge and why we're recommending adopting it at this rate. It maintains capacity charge at similar levels to historic rates. It provides the developers with the ability to tie into an existing reliable system, achieves the growth, achieves the goal of growth paying for growth, continues to provide us flexibility to credit developers for the off-site facilities by having the two components, and we've built in the depreciation and the decreases in the wastewater flows due to conservation.
Carrie, I'm just curious, the, the depreciation period on lift stations was less, 30 years, I think, versus 50 years, is that because it has more parts?
It does, yes, it has the pumps and the motors and the various components.
More that can go wrong.
There's more that can go wrong, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, no other questions or comments? Okay.
I do wanna give President Powell a chance to make comments, if he has any comments on this particular presentation.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Appreciate the reduction, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I have another one briefly. Can bring that one up? Okay, so, um, in September, I brought two presentations to you, and on the 14th, I brought the water demand offset fee, and then on the 28th, I brought the water system backup facility charge. And there were questions and comments from both of those presentations, and so this presentation today is to address those comments. So, the first, um, the first table here is our revised water system backup facility charge. The main comment from this presentation was about the transmission main component. Director Nelson brought, uh, brought that point up, and we appreciate that. We went back, we reviewed each of the components, and we were able to apply, um, a water conservation factor to that transmission main component. So it has decreased, um, from the presentation on the 28th. So, overall, we're looking at a total dwelling unit charge of 3,757 as compared to what it is today. Today, it's 3,707. On September 28th, we presented 3,924. So, I can go into, again, more detail, um, but the main change was the transmission main. The unit quantity was reduced to 10.89. In September, we had a value of 15 in there, and so it's been reduced below the 2012 number. So... Yeah, no, we appreciate the comment, that was, it was, it was very good for us to go back and review that. So, um, this is the meter surcharge, the calc hasn't changed. The numbers decreased slightly from September 28th because the, um, the overall dwelling unit charge decreased. We're still sticking with the meter surcharge waiver, so there's no change there. This is just a brief summary of the revisions that went into the revised number, the 3,757. Some of them, of the other components increased slightly because, mostly because we changed the average life. We went back and looked at that, the average life that was used in the depreciation calcs seemed very low compared to what we were actually seeing in, in, in our facilities, how long our facilities were lasting. But the main driver is the transmission main component, and you can see it went down about So, and how, this is how it went down, we, we basically applied, um, the, the conservation that we're seeing, the production unit demand decreased from 1 to .81. So what we did is we took the number of meters that we were seeing today, 130,000, and we divided that by the .81, and so now we have approximately 160,000 equivalent three-quarter inch meters that are available to be served off of the transmission mains. So that's, that's the driver there. So, that's, that's all of the changes related to the water system backup facility charge. And before I go on to the offset fee, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on, on that. None? No, keep going? Keep going. Okay, so on the water demand offset fee, there were three main items, three main comments. One was a request to look at what happens if the rate was reduced to $1,900 per acre foot per year. The second one was to look at mobile home parks and compare water demands to single-family residents and determine if a lower EDU could be assigned. And the third one was, how does the water demand offset fee interact with the sanitation fund? So, uh, we, we went back, we looked at the calcs, and we were able to come up with a unit cost of $1,918 by adjusting the projects and the volume of acre feet associated with the projects. So, for a three-quarter inch meter at a residential unit, typical residential unit, the water demand offset fee would be $1,392. So here's a brief comparison between, on a per-unit basis, between development types. The first column shows the supplemental water supply charge for a representative project out of each of those categories, what the per-unit rate is compared to what we presented on September 14th compared to what we are presenting today. So, um, for the majority, all of the, um, per-unit values are, are less. There's a couple where there's still a little bit of an increase, and some where they're The, one of the main concerns was the mobile home parks, so we did look at that. And there was a spreadsheet that I attached to this item in SIRE, to the BAI, that gives a little more detail, but the summary of, of the study that we did when we looked at the mobile home parks was, is here. So we looked at six mobile home parks that were located across the valley, and we found that their average day demands were about two-thirds of a residential, single-family residential unit. So, for mobile home parks, we're proposing that the offset fee be $933 per unit as compared to the $1,392 for a single-family home. And then, the, the third item that you asked us to look at and address was the contribution to the sanitation fund. So, um, the amount of funds that we would collect from the water demand offset fees dependent on development and the issuance of new meters, so we had to make an assumption here. But what we did is we looked at the past five years of revenues we've received from the water system backup facility charge. We divided it by the current water system backup facility charge, and we got approximately 979 meters that we've collected on average over the last five years. So we multiplied that by, um, the water demand and the offset fee. So if we go with the $1,918 per acre foot per year unit fee, we would be contributing a close to 1.4 million to the sanitation fund on an annual basis through this fee. Because again, this fee goes to help offset the, uh, the nonpotable water program and So, that is everything, um, on these two studies. These are our recommendations, we're proposing to set the water system backup facility charge at 3,757 per unit. We're proposing to reduce the mobile home park units to .67 of an EDU, and proposing to set the offset fee at a unit rate of $1,918 per acre foot per year. And our schedule, if, if we kinda get the nod, would be to, um, present these final studies through a public hearing on December 7th, and update the ordinances to reflect these new fees and have them go in effect on January 1st, 2022. Happy to answer any questions.
So Carrie, in all of these fees, we're just recovering our costs?
Yes.
Plus a slight inflationary factor?
Right, because the fees are usually set for five years, so we built in the inflation to kinda keep up with that every year until we update them again in five years.
Okay.
Have we sent this information to the building industry?
Yes, I have provided it to Mr. Brown Yard and Gretchen Gitts. Yes, I have provided it to Mr. Brownard and Gretchen Gettner. Yes.
Carrie, on slide seven?
Yep.
Can you help me understand the difference between the September 14 number, the 3,800, and then, and then the numbers in the, in that column, 2,700, and then the same for the 1,900 for today, and then what looks to be the 1,300 for most of them?
So it goes, it goes back to this slide. So on September 14th, we presented 24 projects at a total value of 84 million with a total acre foot of 21,995. So when you basically divide 20, or 84 by 21,000, 22,000, you get the unit cost of 3,828. So to, so when we went back and we looked at the projects and the costs, what we did, the, the assumptions are listed down below in bullets. We removed the onsite costs. We removed the warp seven nonpotable water system expansion phase one, and we included 15% of a blended water system pump station, and we increased the turf conversion projects from 950 acre feet to 1,425 acre feet. So now we're looking at 23 projects, 43 million, 22,430 acre feet. And so when you divide all that out, you get the 1,918 unit cost. And when you multiply that by the annual average day, or annual, annual demand of a residential unit, you get the fee for the three-quarter inch meter at $1,392.
Why, why does the acre feet go up when we have one less project?
Well, we increased the turf conversion projects. That was the increase. So those are the projects that water management works with homeowners and, and golf courses on. So.
So, so are you saying that if, that if a three-quarter inch meter used an acre foot of water per year, that the fee would be 3,800? I guess I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble.
So, so the unit cost is 3,800, and then the annual demand of a, of a single-family residence is .72?
Okay.
Acre feet. So when you multiply .72 by the 38, you get the 27.
That makes sense.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And, and thank you for doing the exercise on the mobile home parks.
Yeah.
I think that's useful information.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. Yes. Are, we, yes, exactly.
I think if you're in a coastal community, it's even less. It's like half. Single-family home uses half an acre foot. In some, it's even less than that. It has to do more with, you know, how things are landscaped, you know, how dense the population is, whether it's multifamily, single-family, et cetera, et cetera.
Weather?
So that's all I have. If there aren't any other questions.
President Powell, do you have any additional comments?
No, I don't. Appreciate the, all of the presentation, though.
Thank you. Okay, I think with that.
Do we want to? Vice President Estrada, I believe we may want to open it up for members of the audience or the public if there's an interest.
Yes.
I see someone trying to work his way up.
The public come up?
Good morning. I am James Brown here, Desert Valleys Builders Association. I really appreciate you guys working through the study sessions, piece by piece, and taking the comments that Carrie's had, you know, as directors and I've had in the past. As far as the process, I like the process. It, it works based on what we did prior, up until 2012. It's going to take us some time to go through these three studies. We're thinking that December 7th is a little quick. If we can push it off to, if you have a second meeting in December, that would be great.
We do not. We do not.
We do. Okay. The other thing is, I believe there's a 60 days period before we can actually initiate once adopted. The other question, the other comment is on slide seven. Why is the storage facilities fee so high? It's like, storage facilities, in my experience, don't use that much water. No, seven.
Oh, self-storage.
Yeah, self-storage facilities.
Oh, for the supplemental water supply charge?
Yeah.
Oh, that, that was an acreage charge. That's the charge we're proposing to get rid of and replace with the offset.
Okay.
Is your mic on, Carrie?
No. So that was, see, self-storage facilities don't use that much water, right? But they have a lot of acreage.
Right.
So the supplemental water supply charge was based on a per-acre fee. And so now it's going to be based on how much water they use. So if, if they use a half of an acre foot of water, for example, let's just say total, right, we're going to multiply that by the 1,918.
Do you have any data on what the self-storage facilities use?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that if possible.
Sure, yeah.
Anyway, I really appreciate the process. We just need some time to go line by line. That's my job. It takes time. So we hope to be able to support the fee and, we're going to bring it in December.
December 7th?
Our work weekends.
Okay. Well, appreciate that. Thank you.
Will these rate, will these fees go through a Prop 218?
No, they're not. They don't.
They're fees, not rates.
They're, they're capacity charges, so they don't apply to the Prop 218.
Most of these fees are going down. So, I mean, do we have to rush it for January 1st?
It's, 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 it's up to you. It's at your discretion of, if you want to hear it on December 7th and not put them into effect until February 1st. I mean, that's, that's up to you. I'm looking for you to, to, to help, help me make that decision. I'm just proposing, you know, we've gotten it this far, just to wrap it up by the end of the year and.
We just wanted to give them time to go through it, I guess.
Yeah.
So maybe we, we do need some more time. I don't know. I mean, if you guys can do it, then we'll, we'll go for it, but. Okay, then it's on.
We're, yeah, we're, we're ready to go for the 7th on our end with the public notice and the BAI and all that, so.
Yeah, if I may, on the process for adoption, it's under government code 66016. It talks about having one notice open in public meeting, but it's not a public hearing, and it's not the Prop 218 procedures. And it requires that information be provided at least 10 days prior to the meeting, that the data required shall be mailed at least 14 days in advance to any interested party. But I'm not seeing a 60-day period upon which it can only go into effect thereafter.
Oh, we, we.
Do you want to send us a site, James?
We reviewed that with your colleague, Luffy.
Yes.
And he told us that the 60-day didn't apply in this situation. And I can provide that.
Yeah, I mean, that would normally be in the case of an ordinance adopted by a city, as the forecourt just said.
Okay, any, any other comments from members of the public?
Let me just make sure. I, we have a couple of members online. If there are any members on Zoom that would like to provide any comment in regards to this item, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, I don't see any.
Thank you, Carrie. Next informational report, advanced metering infrastructure pilot report.
Thanks, James. Morning, Adam.
Mr. Adam McQuaid.
Okay. Good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada, and members of the board. So my name's Adam McQuaid, management analyst with the Service Department. And so this is an informational item, just to provide a summary of staff's findings from the recently closed-out advanced metering infrastructure, or AMI pilot project, as well as to provide some options or ideas for moving forward. So this project was a collaborative effort across multiple departments. Service and operations were the initiative sponsors, but we also received input from Water Management, IS, facilities financed throughout the project. I do have a brief presentation that kind of highlights the report. There's nothing new in there. It's about 10 minutes prepared. If the board prefers, we can skip to any comments, questions, feedback from the report that was submitted. How would you like to proceed? Would you like the presentation?
I think the presentation would be if it summarizes your report.
Okay. So to start, this is just kind of a brief summary of the timeline. So the AMI pilot was adopted as a strategic initiative in September of 2018. The district received a grant from the Bureau of Reclamation in January of 2019 to fund a part of the project. The RFP bids were due in May of 2019. Agreements with the three selected vendors were all approved by the board October of 2019. And then everything, all the equipment and hardware and customer portals were live and installed by October of 2020. And just recently, we wrapped it up, removed all the equipment, returned it to the vendors, closed the portals, and today we are submitting our report. So just a brief summary of what is AMI. So AMI is a meter reading technology that automatically transmits readings from the meter. So typically, it takes a reading every 15 minutes or so, and then uploads those readings to the utility maybe three times a day. Currently, there's kind of three primary meter reading technologies. So there's AMI. There's also AMR, which is a drive-by meter reading. And we currently read about 19,000 AMR meters monthly in the district. And then there's a good old manual. And so we currently read a little more than, I think, 94,000 meters manually each month.
Hey, Adam, I'm sorry. Can I do just, I, I need to do a PSA real quick. I was just advised there's a gray Audi SUV in the parking lot with the driver's side door open. I don't know if it's anybody in the room. No, okay, I just wanted, well, we'll, we'll do an announcement in the room, but just in case there was someone. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. So I did pick out a few tables from the report just to highlight here. So the first one is kind of looking at customer engagement. So one of the highlights of AMI is it does give customers the opportunity to monitor their personal water consumption, get leak alerts, and, and that through web portals or even smartphone apps. And as you can see, this is just looking at the actual customer registration. So we've had about 20% of the customers actually register for the portal. You can see the vast majority of those were actually customers who had volunteered in the first place to participate in the pilot project. So more than 70% of the customers who registered were those who had already volunteered to participate. Next, we kind of just, we're looking at potential workload from AMI. So this is looking at AMI check for movement work orders that were completed by meter reading. So meter reading was monitoring the AMI systems and receiving those leak alarms. When a new leak alarm would come in, they would generate these AMI check for movements to go visit the property, actually view the meter, see if there was movement on it, or take a look around the property real briefly, see if there were any issues. If they saw something, they would let customer service know to contact the customer, alert the customer that there is potential in it, potentially an issue at their property. I think about 30% of these work orders actually resulted in one of those calls to the customer to let them know that there was potentially something going on. Kind of the takeaway from this table is you can see that more than 50% of the meters out there had at least one of these leak alarms work orders done during the course of the one-year pilot. So if you did extrapolate that across the entire district in a full deployment, that could be a significant workload responding to those leak alarms. And finally, pulling out of the report is just kind of looking at the impact AMI may have had on customers' actual consumption habits. So this is looking at the average monthly consumption, comparing those customers who registered for the customer portal versus those who did not. And we kind of broke it down between the two pilot locations. So we had, we had participants in the Indian Ridge community, and then also in a few neighborhoods off the North Deep Canyon there. And you can see that those customers who did not register for the portal did kind of on a monthly basis, use 10 to 15% more water each month. So that's kind of a highlight there. Let's see, so. It's just, so this was just looking at if they registered for the portal. If they reg, so I mean, there's factors outside the pipe. No, the, the customers who did not register for the portal used more water. So, use about 10 to 15. Potentially. I mean, there's factors that could have existed. This was just looking at if they registered. So if they registered and never looked at the portal again, that's not accounted for here. But, I mean, and the fact that it was mostly customers who volunteered to participate in the program. So those are theoretically ones more interested in monitoring their consumption in the first place. But yeah, more engaged. So. But so in North Deep Canyon, there weren't any, we only solicited Indian Ridge for volunteers. North Deep Canyon were all customers that, there were no volunteers there, and they kind of had similar results. But over there, there's, it's a lot less, there were only 10 customers that actually registered. So it is a pretty small sample size. But we just wanted to point out that it, it did appear to have some effect on their, on their monthly consumption. So just point out, so again, this is just an informational item. It doesn't pretend to be a comprehensive cost benefit analysis, but we did want to kind of put in the report some considerations that would need to go into any sort of comprehensive cost benefit analysis if we did perform one. So with respect to benefits, there's kind of broken down into direct and indirect. So direct are more operational kind of dollar benefits. And you typically see those as increased revenue recovery, although as we discussed in the report, that's more a result of actually replacing and putting in brand-new meters rather than a function of the AMI itself. And we referenced in the report a couple of ongoing efforts through various departments to increase revenue recovery currently with our current technologies. Other direct benefits would be efficiency improvements such as meter reading automation, safety for field personnel, since theoretically they're going into the field less, reduced field investigations, changes to our account review process, or other process improvements across the district. Indirect, those you can think of more as like soft benefits. So that could be increased customer satisfaction, increased customer engagement, or transparency with the public because they are getting all this data sent, available to them. With respect to costs, so initial estimates are a full deployment would cost anywhere from 40 to 50 million dollars. The big chunk of that is the initial need to upgrade the meter population to have encoded registers that are able to digitize the reads and send those out. So just to upgrade, the vast majority of meters in the ground is over 20 million dollars. In addition to that, there's ongoing maintenance concerns, or, and there's a lot of variation there depending on what kind of system you deploy, whether you buy it and maintain it yourself, lease it, or hire somebody else to maintain it. So there can be a lot of variation in those potential costs. And kind of final consideration I want to point out is, there's always a lot of questions on how AMI impacts staff. And that really comes down to how the district would decide to manage and utilize and maintain the AMI system and all the data we get from it. We did tour a number of utilities. We did tour a number of utilities prior to the pilot starting, and none of those agencies actually saw a decrease in staff after deploying AMI. It was more a shifting of workload to maintaining and managing that system. So just another thing to consider. So as I said, in this pilot project, we awarded contracts to three vendors. So we had 100 endpoints from each vendor out in the field, or 300 total. So we had Sensus, which uses a fixed radio model, Badger, a cellular model, and Neptune, actual hybrid model. And so with that, we didn't encounter any issues in the deployment or use. That would eliminate one of the three from future consideration. So we could, if we did pursue a full deployment down the road, issue an RFP to just these three vendors as pre-qualified contractors. With that, just kind of going into the options or ideas for moving forward, obviously, there's just maintaining the status quo, monitoring AMI technology, see if there's any big changes, but take no action. Another option is to issue an RFP for a consultant to develop that comprehensive cost-benefit analysis. We would ask them to try to put together some sort of implementation plan, look at how different costs would vary across different timelines, and maybe identify potential grant funding and limitations there. A third option, because these vendors are pre-qualified, we could just go ahead, pursue full implementation, issue the RFP, work with finance engineering operations to put that plan together, find the $40 million and pursue that. Another idea is a hybrid model. We haven't seen any utilities that have anything like this. We were thinking maybe implement AMI just at a specific class, maybe just in businesses or high-water users. But there could be cost-of-service issues or legal concerns with just targeting one on a customer base, and so maybe that's why no utilities are doing that. That was just an idea. And a fifth option is somewhat related to AMI. It's not AMI, but there are consumer market devices out on the market that customers can purchase themselves. So these would be the Flume, there's the Mow &amp; Flow, the Finn, and there's some others. So these are bought and maintained by the customers themselves. It typically connects to their own home Wi-Fi and sends the data to their own phone through an app or something using their personal home Wi-Fi. So we don't currently have any sort of rebate program or partner with any of these products, but we could definitely evaluate options there and pursue something to leverage what's available to the public out there on the open market. So that does conclude the presentation. And again, I'm happy to discuss any comments or feedback, or any of the other charts that are within the report, or the customer comments that we received. But happy to receive any feedback.
I have a quick comment, and it's related to, just in general, your approach in replacing these meters. It sounds like from the chart there, you have a lot of meters that are read manually, and you have some that are AMR. And I'm just wondering if there's a strategy to replace these manual meters when they need to be replaced, not that you would go out and do a full replacement because it's going to cost you, you know, where you just mentioned, $20 million or whatever. But is there a, is there an approach that you're implementing where as they die, you're trying to upgrade those meters so that you end up, you know, shifting manual reads to AMR reads, or?
We had been installing AMR. We actually put a hold on that because, so these smart meters have limitations because the registers are battery-powered, and so we started encountering a lot of failures out in the field. That was causing a lot of issues, and so we've actually put a hold on installing new AMRs and are just putting manual in right now.
Okay.
And that would be another thing that would need to be thought about. If you did pursue AMI, they would have those same battery issues. You would need to have a maintenance or a replacement program in place, planning ahead for replacing all those.
Yeah.
At least the register is 10 years out.
Yeah, so that's, that's, you know, when I, I just, I feel like as an agency, we've continued to do manual reads, and it almost feels like we hesitate to go to the AMR or the AMI. And so unless we make a choice that, you know, we actually like what they do or what they provide, then, I mean, it kind of sounds like, from an agency perspective, we kind of like the status quo is what you're saying.
Well, there's not much benefit.
I would say that's correct. We do like the status quo.
Well, there's not, you just, you just told us there's not a lot of benefit on staffing. I mean, as a homeowner or someone who pays a water bill, you would think that, you know, putting in these meters, remote, the remote meter reading would save money over the long run because you wouldn't have guys coming to your house to read the meter once a month. But through your report, that's not true, that those people get switched over to actually maintaining the system and nothing changes. So there is a benefit for the homeowner, in my opinion, to have real-time water use, but I don't know if it's worth the $50 million.
Well, yeah, and I mean, I think we're going to be getting a lot of data into us on all the consumption, and so we might see a lot of issues. I mean, it is the homeowner's responsibility to maintain, but.
What if you just, what if, what if you just used it for purposes of meter-reading, and you didn't really take into account all the other stuff? And somehow you found a way to manage how you respond to, this appear like there's a lot of workload with the leaks and you having to go out there and respond to those. But what if you just simply, because I mean, I would think you have a whole army of meter readers that are reading 100,000 meters a month. And if the AMI technology is meant to be able to collect a read in a, you know, in a moment, you're saying there's no real benefit to being able to meter-read in, but I would say, you know, a tenth of the time that you're probably, I mean, how much time do you spend meter-reading right now? Are you constantly meter-reading?
We're on a 30-day schedule. So essentially, we're reading meters every day somewhere in the district, and the staffing is basically based on that 30-day cycle for the number of accounts we have.
I mean, that's a whole, you have a whole team, and so.
And I wouldn't say there's no benefits, but I think a lot of the benefits are going to be those soft benefits and not, you're not going to necessarily see those as direct cost savings or.
Well, can I just interrupt you there? Because in the report, sorry to interrupt, but in the report, I thought that I saw very clearly stated that based on a model of 5,000 meters being replaced, there was a savings of over $1 million a year, and that if you replaced all of them, it'd be like $23 million a year. So can you explain why that is not a real savings?
Well, so it is a saving, but what we were pointing out is that's not really a function of AMI. That's a result of replacing and putting in a brand-new meter that theoretically, because it's brand-new, 100% accurately, accurate where they degrade over time. So what we've kind of seen in some utilities where they've gone to AMI is they've determined that their meter population was at a point where it needed to be massively upgraded. And so they kind of attach AMI on top because it's not a huge added cost when you're already needing to replace your meter population.
I think that was the point I was trying to make with the comment about whether you have an approach to replace your manual, you know, kind of more basic meters that you have to go read manually. And, you know, tack on top of that the fact that perhaps you want to transition to the future, and so if it's only going to cost you a fraction more to install that newer technology meter because you're going to replace it anyways with a manual one.
That just, that kind of runs into the timeline issue. So for a cost benefit to really make sense, what we kind of saw, and just looking at real general numbers, was that you really needed to do a deployment within a three-to-five year timeframe to get that benefit of having all those new meters installed. So if we were just requiring developers and replacing 5,000 meters a year, it would take, what, 20 years to put AMI meters out there, and the ones you started with would already be failing. So it really does take that initial investment of the $20 million to upgrade the meters to get that benefit of AMI.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just wanted to say, Vice President Estrada, that we have 12 meter-reader ones that are out there reading most of these meters every month, and we have four meter-reader twos that execute work orders and go out and help as needed on the reading. So we don't have, that's our staffing.
I thought there was like an army.
No, no.
All right, okay.
It is, it is an army, a small one.
A squad.
I believe.
Could I, I just want to say something.
Go ahead.
So I've had, thank you. I've had the Badger for a while, and then I got rid of that and got the Flume, which I have currently. And I just don't think the technology is really there. I know that's not a meter. It's just you strap it on the side of the meter and it listens. And it's pretty accurate, but we have battery issues and we have placement issues, and it was down, and then I had to replace it, and then I had to get new batteries, and it was up again, and now it's down again. I don't know why, but definitely problematic. I think people can, if they really want the benefit of knowing what their water uses, they can get their own, they can go buy a Flume themselves. I'm not sure it's worth it just because of the difficulties that it's not reliable for reasons I don't even know right now why, but it's not working, so. I like the status quo, so I guess is what I'm saying.
So John, I'll reiterate, I've had the Badger meter, I now have the Flume meter, same issues that I've had, you know, had, that you've had. So I could see as our 12 meter readers might get redeployed as 12 trouble shooters, right? Which is interesting because we have, you know, our electric meter is AMI, our gas meter is AMI, everything's AMI, but I don't know, it seems like water is a different animal, maybe. So I'm fine with status quo right now.
Okay, same here. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Good presentation.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to action items. First, item 9A, Top Resolution, Oasis Gardens Mobile Home Park, presentation by Carrie Swain.
Good morning, members of the board. I don't have a separate presentation for this. We did attach all the related documents related for this board action item. So the board action item is to seek board approval for the district to apply for the Clean Water State Water Grant to install, to upgrade our lift station 55-1, and also to convert the remaining 77 septic customers to our sanitation system. I did invite Engineering Manager Armando Rodriguez to, if you had any technical questions in terms of the project. But this one is to, for us to authorize us to apply for the grant, and also to approve the agreement with Desert Home Empires, which owns Oasis Gardens Mobile Home Park, to have this agreement with us to install those, to convert the septic systems to the sanitation, to the district sanitation system. It's about, estimated cost is about $2.8 million. So I don't know if you have any other specific questions that's not under board action item. I'm ready to answer them. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
I'd move approval. Second?
Okay, there's a second. Can we get a roll call?
Could we like to ask if President Powell or any members of the public, just in case, have any questions?
Any other comments from the board? President Powell?
No, I'm good. I'm ready.
Okay. And I do have a couple online, so if there are anybody online that would like to provide a comment, please raise your hand or use the raise hand feature, excuse me. Okay, we have none. Thank you. Thank you. And then I'll go ahead, I guess, and move forward with the roll call vote. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0.
Thank you, Carrie. Next, item 9B, Presentation by David Wilson, Engineering Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
David. Purpose of this item is to authorize the General Manager to execute a non-potable water facilities installation agreement with East of Madison LLC, also known as Madison Club, and award a construction contract to WECA Incorporated as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of $712,959 for the construction of the Madison Club at Avenue 54 Meter Connection Project. The total cost of the request, which includes the items that are itemized before you in the board memo, which I can go into each if you like, is $988,305. The project supports the source substitution element of the Coachella Valley Water Management Plan, providing an alternative source of supply to large irrigation pumpers in lieu of pumping groundwater, which supports our in lieu recharge program. The board authorized staff to solicit bids for construction on September 28, 2021. We advertised for bids to construct on October, I'm sorry, September 30, 2021, and we opened bids on October 21, 2021. Five bids were received and read publicly. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was WECA, again, in the amount of $712,959. The installation agreement provides for CBWD to design and construct the CBWD improvements and the golf course improvements. The customer will provide necessary access. Both parties comply with regulatory requirements. CBWD will reimburse the golf club in the amount of $87,020 for landscape improvements, replacements. And upon completion of the golf course improvements, the Madison Club will take on ownership of the improvements and maintain them in perpetuity. The project is a multi-year construction project that is included in this fiscal year's Easter Plenishment Fund, capital improvement budget in the amount of $800,000. It is anticipated that that $800,000 will be spent this fiscal year with the remaining balance to be budgeted and spent next fiscal year. However, if the project, or if the pace of the project begins to exceed the budget, we will come back to the board and request a budget amendment to reflect that progress and reduce the budget for next fiscal year. Therefore, there will be no adverse impact to the budget. And with that, I will take on any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? President Powell, you have a question? Or a comment?
No, I don't.
There are motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Do the roll call?
Just for, ask for any comments from the public, just to be sure.
Comments from the public? No? Doesn't appear to be any?
No, no comments. Okay, so I'll go ahead and go into roll call. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 9C, Director of Human Resources, Chris, and Scott.
Hello there. Good morning, virtually President Powell, Vice President Estrada, members of the board, staff, and constituents. Before you is the CBWD Vehicle Accident and Incident Prevention Policy. We have that before you for approval, recommendation, and adoption, I should say. This policy has a lot of primary functions. One of the most essential functions of this policy is to lay out the expectations to staff as it relates to operating CBWD vehicles and any disciplinary actions that may ensue for improperly operating a vehicle or violating any policies or procedures, whether that be by the California Department Highway Patrol or other. Highway Patrol or other policies and procedures. This vehicle policy has been talked about and discussed with all of our bargaining units. One of the things on a policy is that the district does have the right to implement a policy, but we do have to go to speak, we do have to speak with our bargaining units as it relates to the effects of this policy. I'm happy to report that we have met and conferred with all three bargaining units, and we have reached approval from all three bargaining units and the district as it relates to this policy. We're happy to ask any questions that you may have as it relates to this policy. You'll also see a supplement to this policy through a revised or enhanced GPS tracking system that will be coming before you after the conclusion of this board action item.
So I have a question. Does this new policy include then the next item on the list? Are we going to have to make it, have an amendment for it?
It will not include, it's a separate item, it's a separate item. Currently, we have a GPS tracking system on our vehicles. What's going to come before you on the next board action item is a revised GPS tracking system.
All right, but that's included in the, in a policy, right, the GPS tracking?
The GPS tracking that we currently have is included here, yes, correct.
I guess what he's trying to figure out is there, is this a chicken or an egg thing?
No, 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 this is, this is, this is not a chicken and egg, so.
So once we have, under the policy, we can, we can choose X, Y, or Z company for our global satellite position?
That is correct.
Good, all right. I'd move approval.
There a second?
Second?
Okay. President Powell, you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm ready.
Okay, is there a member of the public with questions?
I do not see a raise hand feature, so no comments from attendees on Zoom.
And I don't see any raised hands in the room here, so.
We do not, okay.
We can have the roll call?
Sure. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
We, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Passes 5-0.
Moving on, we have a presentation from?
Stuart.
Stuart Taylor, Fleet Manager.
Morning Stuart.
Good morning. President Powell, Vice President Estrada, and distinguished members of the board, we are here this morning asking you to authorize Fleet Management Global Positioning and Vehicle Location Services with Geotab Inc. and RMJ Technologies. This is strategically aligned with the Accident and Incident Prevention Policy that you just adopted. Before we go into the details of this action item, we did prepare a short PowerPoint presentation that we believe would be helpful with the discussion pertaining to the vehicle GPS solution and the available options, which we have outlined as options A, B, and C. And so with that, the Fleet Management GPS and Vehicle Location Services, option A, you'll note the screenshot, this is the main interface between the basic GPS system provisions as well as any options that we may choose to implement. You'll see that the map system is your main screen when you log in, and it provides the GIS elements for the vehicles, the routes, as well as interaction and reporting capabilities, and off to the left you see there's many options that you can select for reporting and other interfaces. A key feature of the Geotab system is that it provides one-second vehicle update rates or pings. As a point of reference, our current system is once every two minutes, so it provides a very good granular detail of vehicle data. It provides information such as vehicle speed and direction, locations and routes, as well as the date and timestamps of where the vehicles have been and traveled. Continuation of the option A, the key component to the Geotab system is the GO device that you'll notice off to the left. It's a piece of hardware that simply plugs into the data connection of the vehicle. It doesn't require any antennas or additional wiring. It kind of is a plug-and-play device, and as soon as you plug it in and start the vehicle and begin your route, then it will begin recording the vehicle location, speed, engine idle time, distance, and much more. This also has the capability of collision reconstruction capabilities by using the data and the GPS tracking capability and software so that it will reconstruct a collision event. It records data prior to, during, and after an event, which is a key piece of functionality to this software. Additionally, the driver RFID identification is another key component that we currently have to do manually. This utilizes a key fob that's assigned to each driver within the district, and when they enter a vehicle, it will automatically associate them with that vehicle so that we have current and accurate and up-to-date information on who is in what vehicle. Even if they have to change at some point during the day to a different vehicle, it will automatically update that in the system. As we continue on to the next slide, the option B would add some additional elements to the program. The first is what they call the Lifesaver Mobile, which is a fleet safety solution that reduces employee distracted distractions while driving. So in a nutshell, what it does is it's an application that loads onto mobile devices that may be in a vehicle, and when, when motion is detected, it will restrict the access to those devices so that it eliminates the distracted driving temptation. The next is a Predictive Coach, which is a Geotab add-in, and it is behavioral-based coaching, which is based on custom rules that are put in place in the Geotab system that establishes exceptions to driver behavior such as speed or harsh acceleration, harsh braking, and things like that. It's automated, and if a certain number of events is exceeded, it will automatically then lead to the proactive defensive driver training, which is assigned via an automated system, and it assigns them online three- to five-minute corrective behavior courses that are directly related to that behavioral deficiency that they may have, and it educates and reminds our drivers how to safely use their vehicle and why it's so important. Another thing that's important to note is this will be closely monitored by supervision and tracked from the assignment of the course to the completion, as well as documentation in an employee file, so that all is something that provides a key component to the program. Finally, the third component or option C would be the addition of Surf Site Video, which is a configurable telematics device that mounts inside the cab of the vehicle. It has options to be configured for multiple views, but at this time it would be forward-facing only, and you'll note on the screen that on the first slide we showed the interface and it didn't show the video. When you add the options for video, then you get that information when you log into the system and you can see what that information is, and that is going to be something that is, is not available to every employee in the district, but it would be to the key personnel who would monitor the system. And with that, I will then go back to cover some of the key points of the BAI. So on page one, the staff recommendation is that the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to engage the services of Geotab Inc. and RMJ Technologies in the amount of $233,687 annually, which is for the option C for Fleet Management Global Positioning and Vehicle Location Services. It is also recommended that the board approve a one-time purchase in the amount of $187,236 for the vehicle hardware, which includes the cameras, asset guards, and driver ID tags. Lastly, it's recommended that the board approve a contingency in the amount of $9,077 for a total request of $430,000. The Fleet Division currently uses Verizon Connect for its GPS services. This is a 3G platform that will soon require migration to a new 4G platform, and this might make a quick side note that that platform isn't being shut down, but they're simply going to stop supporting it, so we won't have any buddy to turn to if we start having failures or issues with the system. However, in order to better manage risk and take a more proactive approach to driver training and monitoring, staff recommends transferring to the Geotab system and their 4G services, which offer significant advantages over Verizon. The key one is the one-second vehicle update rate or ping versus the current two-minute standard that we have. If we were to transfer to the Verizon Reveal Platform, which is their 4G platform, the most frequent updates we can get is once every 30 seconds, and then their system is tiered so that it adds additional cost for more frequent updates or for additional options, and there are some current features that are not even available on the Reveal Platform, so that's why we're recommending the Geotab. The accident reconstruction is another key feature that we feel is of a significant benefit. Also of note is that the Geotab platform is an open platform, so it provides a more technologically sophisticated and advanced platform so that there's future technologies that can be integrated into the fleet management portion of the program. So the Geotab platform utilizes a robust fleet-grade hardware and versatile devices which are easily transferable between vehicles. Geotab has Asset Guard devices that provide reliable battery-powered tracking for movable fleet assets such as our trailers, emergency generators, and heavy equipment, as well as forward-facing and in-cab video recording devices. Staff has evaluated the following three options, which I'm not going to touch on those directly at this moment. We kind of covered the highlights of those in the PowerPoint presentation. So if you would turn to page two, I want to cover the hardware costs, which include the Asset Guard devices, video cameras, and driver identification equipment, which requires a one-time outlay cost of $187,236. A portion of these costs will be offset by a $10,000 credit for returning network fleet devices to Verizon, and an additional $18,000 annually for the BAR SMOG program, and I'd just like to make a couple of points about that. Currently, to keep our gasoline vehicles compliant, we have to physically take them in for SMOG testing, pay the fee, and that requires obviously staff labor to get it there and back, and this system simply takes the data that the GO device collects and transmits it to the BAR agency, and we're either compliant or not, and then we have 90 days to repair a vehicle if it shows non-compliance. So it eliminates that whole process and makes it much more efficient and online, which is a great benefit. To engage the services of Geotab, CBWD will utilize the State of California State Contract Number 1-19-58-69, which provides the telemetry GPS system at contracted pricing to the State of California and local government agencies, so that basically is the GPS portion and the driver RFID tags. To engage RMJ, CBWD will utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, which is a contract number 022217-GEO, which is a national cooperative purchasing agency that solicits bids from vendors in compliance with all applicable municipal purchasing regulations, and that basically will be to acquire the Asset Guards for towed equipment, the trailers, the generators, and heavy equipment. And finally, the Predictive Coach, Surf Site Camera, and Lifesaver Software would be single sourced through RMJ. Staff has determined that it is in CBWD's best interest to select Geotab and RMJ for the Fleet Management Global Positioning and Vehicle Location Services, and the table below outlines the three option corresponding services and associated costs. So I'll just recap those quickly. Option A would be the GPS service along with the Asset Guard for towed equipment identification as well as the RFID tags. If we add option B, which is the Lifesaver Electronic Device Control for in-cab so that the drivers can't access those devices, along with the predictive coaching and automated driver training, then option C adds the video component to the whole program. So the additional monthly expense of $10,000 provides more technologically and sophisticated advanced system, and the benefits, once again, the one-second ping rates provide very granular detailed vehicle data, the accident reconstruction, the electronic device control, the predictive coaching, as well as the automated driver training, and then we also, I would like to remind you of the annual savings of $18,000 because we can utilize the benefit of the BAR program for vehicle emissions testing, and we believe that as we implement, implement this technology that we will also realize additional savings through efficiencies that will be realized as we move forward. And finally, on page three, the fiscal impact. Partial funding for the Geotab GPS and ABL Software Services, ABL is simply an automated vehicle location service, is included in the fiscal year 2022 Motorpool Operating Budget in the amount of $112,000. A budget amendment of $318,000 from the Motorpool Internal Service Fund is required to fund the recommended option C for a total requested amount of $430,000. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a lot of questions, because you knew I was going to. That was a fantastic presentation, by the way. So no matter if it's option A, B, or C, we need a budget amendment, right? So, I mean, this is, this is, this is a budget amendment, whether it's A, we're going to add another 40, or C, we're going to add in another 300,000 to the budget, right? And, and I wanted to know, how much are we currently paying on a monthly basis for our system now?
So currently, we pay, our average invoice has been about $7,000. We budgeted about $9,300, the $112,000, and there's some circumstances that have led up to the reduction in the cost. It's because, number one, they're stopping support for the system and they lowered our monthly fees and issued us a refund about a year ago, all, I think, in advance of the fact that this platform is being no longer supported. So to go with that, the $9,300 that we have budgeted, we would be very close on option A without an amendment, I believe, and then option Bs and Cs would require the budget amendment for sure.
I mean, option C is us paying almost a quarter million dollars a year just in monthly fees to keep the system going.
Correct.
So let me answer the first question. Motorpool doesn't have a revenue stream, it's an internal fund, so basically allocate, we charge our monies back to the enterprise funds at a percentage. We have line items that we're going to adjust to be able to do the budget amendment, so there's not going to be any impact on the existing fiscal year operating budget. My group is going to work to make sure that it's itemized and reallocated, and that we have separate line items to be able to adjust to the negative to be able to pay for the additional $318,000. That being said, our existing system, you know, I think I've, I've heard the board, we've worked directly with HR on the Accident Prevention Policy or Vehicle Accident and Incident Prevention Policy. I have a committee of all my office managers and all our assistants. We take it very seriously. We meet on a monthly basis to develop the policy, and now we're going to determine how to implement it. We're trying to do consistency on the reprimands as a result. My group does more than 2.4 million miles a year. We're on the streets, you're on the streets, you see people doing 70 and blowing red lights, it's not always us, but we're having trouble getting insurance. So I heard the board, we're in a new time where it seems like cell phones are part of your arm. We're trying to minimize the impact and, you know, it's 100,000 more than our existing system. Our existing system, if you can fathom, two-minute pings doesn't help me a whole lot at a red light, when I can see, you know, 100 feet before and 1,000 feet after. In that two minutes, there's no dings in between, this is by the second. I'm going to be able to, every second, it's going to ding, it's going to tell me exactly what the speed is and exactly what that driver's doing. It's going to help us change the culture. The cameras facing, front-facing, isn't just going to help change the behavior, I think it's going to help, should we not be at fault. It's going to show another car pulling out in front of us, that which happens all the time, people switching lanes. I think for an extra $100,000 a year, I think it's going to buy us a lot of benefit. It'll help us change behavior, get our insurances back, and I think it's more than warranted. That's kind of where we are, and we're completely aligned with Human Resources on trying to optimize and minimize the accidents and incidents that we have. It's appalling, so.
So, I mean, I would say, I get what you're saying.
Sure. Sure.
I, I think the district does a pretty good job. I mean, I, I mean, I drive fifty thousand to seventy thousand miles in this desert. I'm, see the vehicles. I don't see anybody speeding. I, I think everyone, we, our, our accident rate, we, is, is purely, I think, mostly accidents. Be wrong. I, I don't know if we need to go and spend this kind of money um a month. I, I understand it's, 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 it's between want and, and need.
So, so I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If I could, if um, uh, one is, uh, I like, I like the Predictive Coach. I think that's fantastic. I'm very familiar with Geotab. We have some vehicles that, that we use, and it's a, it's a good system. And um, so um, it's, uh, you know, it takes some management of it. It's not just a, you know, it's not just a, hey, let's buy the system and, and go. I mean, there's some other activities that, that you're going to, responsibilities that you're going to have to assume with that. Um, so on the phone lockouts, what, uh, how is that going to work with, when there's maybe uh hands-free options in the phone? I mean, does it, does it just shut down the phone completely, or there's still capabilities for that? How does that work?
So my understanding is that it's an application that loads on to the device and that when it senses a vehicle movement, it will restrict. Uh, so if you're using a, a map or something like that, it will still allow that type of a function so that you can navigate to where you're going. But what it won't allow you to do is, is pick it up and use it as the phone device or texting or something like that. It's going to restrict that access so that you're not distracted and trying to use and interact with that device. But it will allow some functionality, I believe, uh, based on hands-free.
Okay. And then in this new policy that we approved, are we prohibiting the use of personal cell phones and, and um, because, you know, obviously, we're trying to change the culture, right? So you, you lock out your business phone, but now you have a person, you know, a lot of people have two phones, uh, so they have a personal phone. I, I mean, is it, is that prohibition uh in the, in the policy that we just approved?
That might be a better question for Scott.
I would imagine the lockout pro, software would scramble any cellphone, business or private.
Well, it's on, it's on the particular device.
It's on, it's an app on the phone.
Ah.
Is how it works. It's what he said. So, so you'd have to, you'd have to require someone to put a, the app on their phone. And I, you know, I don't know if that's in the policy.
I don't know that we restrict, we, we have a, a process where we can, you know, bring your own device to work. Um, but we don't restrict people from having a personal phone.
Yeah, yeah, sure, right.
I don't know how that would.
You wouldn't, but, you know, are you going to prohibit it in the driving of a company vehicle?
Well, they're not supposed to use a phone in the vehicle. They're supposed to use a hands-free device. But what we've found out happening is people get distracted and they're either doing a text or they're talking on the phone and.
That's not hands-free, the text.
The only thing we can do is restrict the district phones or the phones that we pay, uh, bring your own device to.
So we do have a policy about utilization, utilization of personal phones in vehicles while driving. It's, it's considered distracted driving, so it falls under distracted driving process and, and procedure. Um, but as far as um utilizing or having a personal phone on your person, there is no restriction. Anyone could have it.
No, just in dri, I'm just worried about driving.
That's correct.
Yeah. Just worried about driving, okay. So here's a question for Jeff. Obviously, collision reconstruction would be important to us. Are these public documents under, uh, that can be accessed by uh other parties?
Yes, information about accidents and things of that nature are by lar, by and large, a public record. There may be issues regarding public employee privacy issues or pending litigation, but as, in general, yes, that is public information.
Okay, and so there's, that's a double-edged sword there. So, uh, and so Jim, we're currently self-insured because we cannot get insurance through a carrier on our automobiles is, uh, because of our, because of a number of factors.
Yes.
Incidents uh are contributing to that.
Yes. I, I would say that's an accurate description of where we are.
All right.
And one of the things that the insurers are going to be looking for is in order to procure insurance and to be eligible for getting automobile insurance is, do you have a policy in place? Have you disciplined employees for any type of violations, things of that nature? So they have a checklist that they're going to see, and if the agency doesn't have that, then that certainly hurts their chances of procuring automobile insurance. This is a step forward for us to get and able to procure and secure automobile insurance, but also lay out again the expectations. What is the expectations? We're public stewards, employees are public stewards, and there's an expectation of safety as it relates to operating a CVWD vehicle. And I think it would be remiss by not making sure that employees understand that expectation and as well as management assessing the situation and ensuring appropriate actions been taken for corrective actions that come into play with that.
Yes, what I, what I hear too is that, so we don't have insurance, we can spend the money uh for a program such as this to then be able to qualify for insurance. And, you know, accident these days, uh, a hundred thousand, uh, half a million, a million, two million, depending on what kind of accident, um, these kinds of costs would help, help uh defray those types of judgments against the district.
Absolutely.
Is that what you're saying?
This type of system provides very good risk mitigation.
I mean, risk mitigation, are you saying we can't get insurance unless we pick option C?
I'm, we're saying option C is going to help us minimize the amount of insurance. And honestly, I know you don't see it, but I sign three incident reports a week, and it's very frustrating, and staff does a good job, they're trying to take it seriously, but we need to reduce that. That is ridiculous with the amount of, we have four hundred and fifty people on the, on the road every day, and it's too much. So what we're trying to do is, one, get the consistency on our discipline through the policy, and then be able to curb the behavior through these additional items, including the front-facing camera. And I do think for a hundred thousand a year, it's going to return several folds on an annual basis.
Is, is there a, is there, are there any audible um, um, uh, audible.
Alerts?
Parts to this to where if someone's speeding, you can, you can set it five miles an hour, ten miles an hour, or if their seatbelt's unbuttoned, uh, you know, all that?
That's through the Predictive Coach. Yes, and it, it does have the ability to be uh, to, to send alerts and, and allow the driver to know that there is some sort of a uh.
And those are variables, so you can.
Yeah, so speed.
Find some leeway on speed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we, you know, we don't want any speeding, but we, we manage it now on a weekly basis. A report goes out on anybody that's speeding, and all the managers look at that in my group, as does HR. We're going to do it throughout the whole company. If somebody's braking too much, they're going to get a coaching session where their supervisor's going to say, hey, you have so many days to be able to take this three-to-five-minute training on why are you braking so hard and/or speeding? So it's, I think it's a constant thing that's going to help us honestly curb the behavior, so.
You don't, I'm planning on putting this on the director's code.
Directors, yes. Directors, no, sir.
Yeah. Division directors.
I already have one.
So I, I have a concern.
Sure.
If I could just uh say this. Uh, first of all, I think anything that reduces distractions, I think, is, is, is great, it's something that we should support. But I do have a concern about the camera mounts, particularly uh the impact on the employee, and um, uh, I'm wondering, is this something that is a uh meet-and-confer item? And uh, I think, you know, employee input on this is particularly issue, particularly if the driver facing in cab view is something that's going to be a, a standard that we're going to be implementing, and how are you going to do that? I, I have, I have some issues with this option C.
Certainly, Director Aguilar. So all the bargaining units have met and conferred as it relates to the Geotab. Uh, so that already is in existence. We are, we currently have a GPS tracking policy. Uh, so we, so the district already has a GPS tracking policy. So employees are aware that at any point in time that they travel and utilize a CVWD vehicle, that that can be tracked via GPS technology. The only change on this is a camera, and we've met and conferred with all bargaining units, and we've received approval that they're okay with the camera as long as it's facing on the outside. Um, as it faces the inside, we're not there yet. But as far as attaching a camera to the outside, every, every bargaining unit has agreed.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know, because your, your presentation says in cab view, facing in cab. So that tells me that.
Sorry, we have the ability to go in cab, audio and visual? The meet-and-confers are only for the front view only.
The, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the um, I'm just wondering if you have issues or you anticipate issues related to supervisors trying to get a hold of their workers and um making calls while they're driving? Um, you know, is, is there a process for that? Is there procedure on when an employee's expected to call back? I mean, can an employee just say, you know, I'm driving, I'm never going to pick up my phone? Have you anticipated any of that?
So uh, the thing about this system is that the crew chiefs and supervisors have the access and they can log in and see if their drivers are, or their employees are currently driving and where they're going and wait to try to communicate with them until they've reached their destination. Um, so I think that this is another tool in a way to eliminate another potential for distracted driving, is that they have that very, very granular data that they can see exactly what they're doing and where they're going and wait until it's a, an appropriate time to contact them.
I don't know. I'm not going to access the computer to see if Jim's available. I'm just going to call. I, I would imagine that that would go down the, down the line.
Well, in, in theory, too, a lot of employees don't have work phones. So their, their supervisor shouldn't be reaching out to them on their personal phones regardless.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's very true.
And, and what we're doing as asset management comes in, people are going to have iPads and things where we're going to be more communicative, communicative through iPads, but we're not going to give everybody a, a cellphone. We don't have five hundred and fifty cellphones.
We also have two-way radios.
Okay, that's what I was going to, thank you. I didn't even want to call back.
Yeah, I, I got a, I got a response yesterday from an assistant director that said, I'm currently driving and I'll call you back upon, you know, finishing up my drive.
The actual, the vehicle accident incident prevention policy actually states that the driver must pull over safely as soon as practicable to the side of the road or an alternate safe location to check any messages, returning calls, et cetera. So it's included or embedded in the vehicle accident incident prevention policy. Again, this is a policy that we're laying out the expectations and we'll be training to all employees to know what those expectations are.
Do we still have Motorola radios in the vehicles? Yes, certain groups use them constantly, certain groups don't ever use them.
Those are good because then you don't have to worry about this three G, four G, five G technology.
Yeah. Just a repeater.
Exactly.
Yeah. Um, yeah, um, I would uh move approval of uh option C of the presented um uh action
Second?
Hey, um, I'm going to ask President Powell if he has any further comments or questions.
Uh, no, good presentation. I like it. I think it's uh been a help quite a bit, so I support it.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public?
I am checking. I do not see any raised hands, so we're good.
Can we have a second? Can we get the roll call?
Sure. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Okay. Four one. That passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Okay, moving forward, we have a presentation from Dan Charlton, Assistant General Manager. Nine E.
Uh, so this recommendation is for the award of a construction contract to CSI Electrical in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for a domestic water potable telemetry upgrade project specification twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-nine. It's also to recommend task order seven to Adolph Consultants in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars for engineering services during construction and a contingency in the amount of forty thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars for total requested authorization of one million, thirty-seven thousand and two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Um, so the project itself includes the upgrade of nine programmable logic controls or PLCs at CBWD's domestic water sites. Uh, we currently have a hundred and sixty-nine domestic sites, and with their new SCADA equipment, if you can imagine, we have a uh brand-new iPhone eleven or thirteen, whatever it is now, at trying to communicate with rotary phone. Um, so our micro RQs in general are forty years old. Uh, we don't have the ability to even replace them. You can't purchase them anywhere. We're actually taking boards, if you can imagine what they call motherboards, and removing a piece of solder and taking a small component and trying to makeshift. And it's, it's just inefficient, and it's not where we should be as a company. They're beyond their useful life, they're antiquated, and we need to slowly take the hundred and sixty-nine sites and get them up into a computer system on the site where we have our eyes and ears in the field. We need to be able to pull more information back to the company. Uh, data is power. Being able to track the data, trend the data, and find the gaps helps us to create operational optimization. Um, that being said, um, we put twenty sites out to bid in different schedules, um, and we received one bid by CSI. Um, they had one mistake in their bid, uh, meaning they put five percent of the whole twenty sites rather than five percent of the uh certain amount of schedule, eight sites that were in schedule A. Uh, we've talked to CSI, they've agreed to correct bid item two, uh, in accordance with the maximum allowable amount in the contract of five percent. And as such, based on the bid, we're recommending uh approval of schedules A, B, and D. So that'll give us eight sites in schedule A, an allowance of thirty thousand in schedule B, and schedule C, which is one more site, um, to be able to be completed or constructed at a cost of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, how are we going to fund this? Well, um, we all know domestics been, uh, you know, uh, the, the funding has been uh very conservative. Um, so what I've been doing is piecing together a bunch of different funding components. Um, we have two hundred and fifty thousand in this year's operating budget that's approved. Um, we have a demand response that we're working through N-Response through SCE, whereby we're, uh, they're going to provide us two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for capital, uh, to be able to build this project, and then an extra hundred thousand dollars a year for uh load shedding. Um, in addition to this, um, we, uh, Luis has provided me a hundred and fifty thousand from the SCADA master plan, and since it's a two-year project, uh, because of the timing of the um, uh, application to N-Response, uh, submittal to SCE, it's going to be done over two fiscal years. So my only request above that is that we would need to put in the same amount of two hundred and fifty thousand in the fiscal year twenty-three operating budget to be able to do these nine sites. I think it's a smart thing to do. I think it's going to take us into the, the generation that we should be in with these micro RQs. And once these, they've already started to fail, and we've been putting Band-Aids on Band-Aids, but if we don't truly come into the twenty-first century with the brains or the CPUs in the field on these domestic sites, that's our main revenue stream, we're going to be in trouble. So we just want to do it slowly, a little at a time, and we'll continue to do so and find ways to fund it uh over the next seven to ten years, to get all these sites up to where they should be and communicating direct information, instantaneous information, uh, back to the groups. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Are you um thinking that there's going to be another slot of these? I mean, I think right now you're saying you're doing twenty, but are you going to do another?
We're only doing nine this year. Um, we're going to learn from that. Um, as far as what works, what doesn't, is there any way to optimize the nine that we're currently bidding? We've got them all designed. Um, and I think every year, we're going to be requesting some contribution to be able to continue on with the implementation of these over time. Uh, the micro, I mean, you have to have eyes in the field, uh, to be able to maintain these domestic sites, and we're just losing that capability. And we have this massive optimized program that we can't even communicate with, with forty-year-old equipment, that they had to write middleware even to communicate at all with this equipment. And now, uh, in addition to that, we can't even buy. And now, in addition to that, we can't even buy the equipment. So I'm envisioning a phased approach over the next 10 years, for sure.
Okay, I must have had the number stuck on my head. You said 20 domestic water sites?
That's what the bid was, but it's in several different schedules. And because of the amount of the bid, we're only awarding or recommending award of some of the schedules. Some of the schedules were only one site at a time. And we didn't know, we wanted to optimize how much money we have and making sure that we use the ENSpange money. So we optimize that in far as, you know, get our biggest bang for our buck based on various schedules. We're going to recommend nine.
Okay, any other comments?
So there's 169 sites?
Well, there's 98 well sites, there's 63 reservoirs, and there's the rest booster stations. So, yes, sir.
169 sites and we're doing nine for about $100,000 of these?
Yeah, so that's 16.9 million. I don't, there's a priority system and we've prioritized these. And we're going to continue to do the same thing as we move forward and do the sites that are most important. New sites are always coming with a brand-new PLC, that's very simplistic, but we'll strategically move along based on the priority system that we have. Reservoir levels, though important, aren't as complicated and don't have the ability to bring back as much information as a well site. So we're going to be focusing on the key wells that are important in each production zone.
So is this related to the SCADA system in terms of you need to upgrade the equipment at the well sites and the reservoir sites in order to communicate with Luis's SCADA system?
Well, forget the SCADA system, there are 40-year-old sites that we can't get any parts for, we can't replace. So I would say they are independent, but having the ability with the new SCADA system, we can put in these new PLCs. And if you can imagine getting back 36 pieces of information versus four, you know, how much labor that's going to save over time. We can actually, if you have a PLC, we can actually tie in to the PLC on the site and troubleshoot instantaneously with the new PLC. You can't do that with a micro RTU that's 40 years old and Band-Aid it together. So it's going to save us a lot of money. It's going to save us one trip to every well site immediately. It's going to save us a lot of money through trending and those type of things. So it's an instantaneous savings, but it, over time, it's going to get more and more.
So this will mostly benefit your electrical people or what?
Electronic people, definitely, but mostly the production people in domestic. So there's 15 in construction and maintenance and 15 in production that run the or operate the systems. That'll be the primary benefit.
What information do you get?
There's a lot of information. So right now, we can get flow, how many, you know, what the gallons per minute is, pressure and tank levels. We're going to be able to get totalizers, the actual meter read on some of these things, on production, not consumption, they're different. The interface terminal, power failures, generator status, flooding alarms, chlorine levels, temperature, vibration sensors, turbidity, chromium six coming, we're going to need some of that stuff. Video surveillance is really important now that we can't do now. So there's like a plethora of things that we're going to be able to do, that we can do instantaneously upon construction. But in the future, we're going to have the inputs or the ability to put more onto those PLCs as necessary as we evolve. And right now, a micro RTU, we just don't have that capability.
President Powell, you have any questions or comments?
I like the approach of starting a little slow and learning as you go.
Any other comments from the board members?
No, but I'll move the item nine E.
Cal, second. Any comments from the public?
I do not see any of the attendees with the raised hand.
Okay, we have a second. Can we get the roll call?
Sure. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is nine F. Luis Maciel, Director of Information Systems.
Can I ask you a question before we get started? Luis? Luis, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Why can't, for the boardroom, why can't your team go in there and fix that up and make it useful?
We are.
Without a proposal?
We are...
Equipment-related?
Yeah, we bought some equipment to make it work temporarily, but our goal is to, once we upgrade this room, to come up with a approach to upgrade. We just, you know, we're very mindful about cost and we don't want to bring both to the board at the same time. But we're in the process of, I hate the word, use the word "patching" here, but we're in the process of coming up with a temporary solution that will allow us to do that.
If I may add, Director Bianco, Dan's team has graciously offered to do some remodel in there. It requires rewiring and things of that nature, and they will be building a small AV room to give us the same thing. So this is going to happen in the next couple of months. And then, as Luis mentioned, we have, we secured what we called a mobile cart, an AV cart, which will allow us to do it on a, you know, it's a short-term solution to buy us a year or two to find a more long-term solution.
Oh, we are, sir. Okay, good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada, members of the board. My name is Luis Maciel, I'm the Director of IT. And I'm here today to request authorization to release an RFP to upgrade the audiovisual equipment in the Steven Robbins Administration Building. I have a presentation with me today to kind of quickly go over some of the details. And I only have five items that I'd like to share with you, the recommendation, obviously, the goals of the project, the scope, schedule, and budget. I do want to let you know that to make sure that CBWD receives a cost-effective proposal, we are not disclosing the budget amount, but it is in our CIP. And the General Manager knows our budget, if not, we can show that up in the closed session. So again, the main goal of this is to approve the release of an RFP for upgrade of audiovisual equipment in the Palm Desert Boardroom and associated facilities, which are the adjacent conference rooms, the atrium, and the training rooms. This is almost a mantra now, but it is. Equipment that is out of warranty is old. This equipment was procured in 2009 when this building was commissioned. And technology for these sort of facilities has changed significantly. Not to mention the fact that we're in a conferencing world now where everything is through teleconferences. I'd like to point out to the fact that that camera is not even, it's just there for looks. It doesn't work anymore. It has very low resolution. And it looks very fancy and everything, and you may say, "Whoa, what's wrong with that camera?" Well, it has such a role as a low resolution, it wouldn't work through our website right now. We obviously have difficulty maintaining and supporting the current system. The display, the present information can be improved. I don't know if you know this, but I'm sure you've been to other boardrooms where you have multiple displays available. We've visited a couple cities, actually a few cities here in the valley where they have recently upgraded their boardrooms, and they have more visibility when it comes to audiovisual equipment, and it's very helpful for people. We also want to have the ability to integrate the new video equipment with the Agenda Management System, which we're in the process of replacing. And we want to have compatibility with other facilities that we have recently upgraded. So these are some of the main reasons for that. Again, we want to provide improved support for board meetings, staff meetings and presentations, and other functions that are usually, you know, take place in these facilities. We want to be able to link the board agenda items to the recorded video so it's easy for the customers to be able to find the different board items. If you actually look at, like I said, all the cities, you get up to their website and you click on an item and right next to it, they displays the actual video of the meeting, which is very helpful. In the future, we feel that closed captioning will be our requirement, and I think we need to be ready for that because it would be, it will not be optional. So we're also thinking about what other potential opportunities we have to improve the system, and that could be through, you know, a requirement by legislation on the state. You know, we are very mindful, and I know we always say this, but we really mean it because the General Manager always brings this up to us, is we have to be very mindful of our cost. And so we are upgrading the system, we're not ripping and replacing. So whatever we can salvage, we will. So for instance, cabling, equipment racks, any appliances that are still under warranty, which last time we checked, there was none, but if we can, we will. The ceiling speakers, which they usually is not a big problem, power infrastructure, and any other serviceable equipment. If we end up replacing this video wall here, we will retain it to maintain the video wall in the atrium so that we can use it if something breaks down. So we would put two brand-new monitors here, but we will retain these ones because there's actually the same configuration as the one in the atrium to extend the level of the atrium and, you know, extend the cost benefit for the district. So those are some of the things that we're keeping in mind here. So this is the project scope. We're looking at upgrading the cameras, the displays, the microphones, and the AV controls. The microphones, because we keep dealing with backfeed issues and a lot of it has to do because the technology is outdated. We're going to be looking at the AV control room, clean up everything, remove the outdated equipment, repositioning the racks, which actually get in the way of visualizing what's happening here, it's hard to support. We're going to look at the training room because it's actually our overflow in case we have ever, and right now it's COVID times, but in other times, we actually use it for overflow. It's used for training. These rooms, just so you know, they're not, you know, obviously not just for the boardroom, but they're used for a multiple water function. So the investment is utilized consistently. There's a good return on investment when you upgrade these facilities because we don't have a lot of meeting space. optionally, again, once we know cost, we would like to also upgrade the administration conference room, engineering conference room, finance, and the human resources conference rooms, which are built with the same technology back in, you know, from those days. Most of the time, you know, something is not right or something breaks. Every single workstation that you're using right now has equipment, technology underneath, appliances that I'm buying out of eBay right now. I actually bought about 10 the other day to make sure that we don't run out. And I usually replace these ones about every three months. They're everywhere, and the same technology is over in the conference rooms. I had to go and fix the board conference room not long ago as well. The equipment is failing. I mean, it's, again, it's a 12-year-old technology. Here's the schedule and the budget. So we are projecting that this may take a year because we want to balance the budget. So we have some budget for this fiscal year, and there'll be additional budget coming for the next fiscal year. Some of the concerns we have with this project is that there's national supply chain issues. We're having issues right now getting monitors for other projects that we have and other electronics because there's a shortage in chips and other issues with, you know, with products made out of China. We, you know, reconfiguring the AV control room may be a problem in that it depends how much complexity we want to put in, you know, we may, it may take a little longer to deploy. We need to recertify the cabling to make sure that we don't have feedback issues, quality issues, and things of that nature. And then we have to integrate to the extent that is possible the new Agenda Management System. So if the board approves this item, we will release the RFP. We will obviously conduct a solicitation, just so the board knows, we are putting a high percentage in the cost, as it has been recommended in the past, to make sure that we get, you know, that the vendors are mindful about our request to have a cost-effective, a fully functional but cost-effective system. If all goes well, we will return to the board in February. We will issue the notice to proceed in March, and we will start implementation. We will hopefully complete everything by the end of next calendar year. These are some of the facilities that we're planning to upgrade. One of the things that we don't have in this room right now that it's very useful because we, as you can see, we constantly struggle this automation. Our EOC now supports us, so you walk into the room, you select the profile, whether it's a board meeting, a study station, grapes, growers' meeting, whatever you want to call, and then the system automatically turns on and is very easy to operate because everything is integrated and automated. We don't have that, so it's a little bit embarrassing sometimes when we're scrambling to get things working and I, you know, we know the frustration and we want to fix it with your support. If you don't have any questions on the presentation, I'd like to move on with the VAI. Okay? So it is the recommendation of staff to approve the solicitation of proposals for the upgrade of audiovisual equipment in the Steve Robbins Administration Building, which include the board chambers, AV control room, board conference room, training rooms, and the atrium. In addition, a general design for conference room AV installations will be requested as an option to upgrade the conference rooms as I mentioned that earlier. In summary, the AV system in the Palm Desert Boardroom was installed as part of the commissioning of this facility. The existing equipment has provided good service, and one can argue that we got our return on investment already. And it's obsolete. As part of the project, the existing cable plant, ceiling speakers, and anything that we can salvage will be retained. In addition to the board chambers, AV room, upgrades to the AV equipment in the boardroom conference room, training rooms, and the atrium were necessary. The remaining five conference rooms in the Steven Robbins buildings are similar albedi, so we will consider upgrading those as a potential option. The fiscal impact is considering this CIP, and we actually have budget for that. And then remaining costs will be proposed in the upcoming fiscal year. And that's my report this morning.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Thank you. It sounds like you said that you have the, it's budgeted, right?
It's budgeted, yeah, it's budgeted. And for the most part, it's budgeted. If there was any additional cost that we, it would be charged to the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Here's the motion.
I'll make the second, but I just have a quick point I want to make. So do you ensure that you include vendor orientation for staff training on this new equipment and to ensure that they'll just install the equipment and then they whenever see them again? And if there's troubleshooting, then there's a problem. So is that included in your RFP, that language?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things, one of the challenges we have is that we have, we actually have partners that are willing to support this room, but because the room is outdated and we unfortunately don't have the original code, they don't want to support it. Because if they try to fix anything, they'll break the system and we will have nothing. So the, so this project will come with a contract for support. Now, when you, when we design, I guess the ones that I've been involved, like the EOC, it's very minimum training required, but we will because the system is designed to be intuitive. So you walk up to a console, you select the different type meeting you want to have, and automatically things work, supposedly. And it has been very successful at the EOC. We use it all the time, we're very minimal support for IT. So in the past, the systems were cumbersome, even when they had an LCD panel to select things, were not as reliable. This system is all serial. We're moving to a technology called Ethernet, it's all IP-based, which makes it more reliable. We're able to actually have ice into the system. We can remote it, control it from anywhere in our facilities. Right now, we can because it's a serial, it's a serial system. So there's a number of benefits that we will get in from the support perspective and also from the, from the user interface. Because in fact, we looked at Rancho Mirage, and theoretically, the board secretary can actually operate the room from there. We don't mind that because we have, you know, it's busy here with us, but that's the functionality level that we're looking for.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
President Powell, you have comments, questions? President Powell, you have comments, questions?
No, no, I, I thank you for the presentation.
Any comments from the public?
I, I see no, no member using the raise hand feature.
There was a motion, there was a second, roll call.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
That's about three years ago. And I swelled to do the same thing, so I'm pleased that we got another three years out. It sounds like we might get two more.
Thank you. And that actually was for Coachella.
The last one?
Yeah, he says he got three more years for Coachella.
Two more years? Yeah, we can do it. And that passed 5-0, thank you. And thank you for the board. I really do appreciate the board's support on this because this really impacts a lot of staff, as you can tell, and we've had to do some modifications in the boardroom to be compliant. So this will definitely get us where we need to be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate the support.
Okay, moving on to my G. This is a presentation by our clerk.
Yes, so I will actually just do the introduction. I'm lucky enough to have Jeremy Holm from BBK, from their redistricting division to provide a presentation to the board or a report, I should say, from, for the redistricting of our boundary. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jeremy.
Good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada and the members of the board. You know, as, as the clerk indicated, my name is Jeremy Holm and I'm an associate of Best Best and Krieger in the redistricting division. I'm here to provide an update on the redistricting process. I believe I initially presented this issue to the board during the summer, just as an initial consultation, but now that the census data has been released, it's time to provide an updated presentation that'll provide a bit of a refresher on the process and outline the steps going forward. And with that, I have a presentation prepared, so can we get that started?
Yes.
We're, we have it. Just let me know what, when to change slides, Jeremy. We're on the cover slide right now.
Yep, so next slide. So again, this presentation will cover some project timelines, key deadlines and overall discussion of the next steps in hearings. We have a tentative schedule prepared. And the next slide. So in terms of the CVWD, board members hold four-year terms. Districts one, three and five, the terms are elected in November 2022 and for districts two and four, terms are elected in November 2024. This is important because it's one of the overriding considerations for redistricting is to avoid shifting potential constituents into a different election year. Next slide, please. So this is just an initial, just a typical schedule for the redistricting process. Again, we have a particular schedule prepared for CVWD, but this will just provide some information on how this process will be conducted. So you initially hold a pre-draft meeting. You know, as the name indicates, it's held prior to the release of all the draft map, draft maps. And, you know, this is mostly to, you know, educate the public, the board and to solicit input from the community, in particular to identify specific neighborhoods, communities of interest, that's a term of art that will be discussed a little bit later, and potential secondary areas. So essentially just identifying key areas in which we want to keep in mind during the redistricting process when we're potentially drawing new boundaries. So, you know, then that moves on to initial deadline for draft maps. Usually during this process, the public is invited to submit draft maps for inclusion in the hearing packet and presentation and the, the board can consider those maps and, and potentially make alterations to the maps that we'll be presenting later on, well, I guess early next year. So the draft maps will be released to the project website. I believe they're still developing a specific page on the CBWD website. That will be the, the one-stop shop location for all these redistricting maps. And then after the maps are released, we go into the public hearing phase. Again, for special districts, it's two public hearings, but the way that we have made the schedule, it allows potential additional meetings on this topic, just in case a significant amount of public input is required or if there are a significant amount of comments presented by the board when we ultimately present draft maps. And then finally, for map adoption, the maps adopted by an ordinance or resolution and the final map must be posted publicly at least seven days prior to the adoption. And again, this is just a typical process and we have a specific timeline for CBWD toward the end of the presentation. And next slide, please. So in terms of the rules guiding redistricting, there are quite a different areas of law that come into, come into effect with this and it can get quite complicated. So one of, overall, one of the most significant considerations is one of the major purposes of redistricting, which is adjusting the divisions of a public entity based on the population change as outlined by the, as shown by the census. And that also includes some compliance requirements of the Federal Voting Rights Act, want to avoid racial gerrymandering and potential Fourteenth Amendment concerns. And, and that's just the federal side of things. So on the California side thing, side of things, it's compliance with the, you know, the California Voting Rights Act and other specific criteria as outlined by the state. And a lot of this has to do with the actual composition of the district, of the divisions themselves. So related to the topography, the geography, cohesiveness, whether or not they're contiguous, integrity of the territory and going back to those community of interest mentioned a little bit earlier. And then finally, you have a third set of considerations here. As I mentioned initially, you, you want to minimize the voter shifted to different election years if possible. It can be, it'll be confusing for constituents if all of a sudden they have to vote in two more years, in, in two years after when they were expected to vote. And, and you know, of course, you want to respect the voters' choices, ensure continuity of office and then hopefully address future population growth. So by the time the census rolls around in 10 years, we can hopefully keep the maps. And, you know, just preserving the core of the existing districts. Next slide, please. So this is a map of the existing districts. You know, as you can see, it's split into five divisions and ultimately, based on the census data, we're going to have to, the district is going to have to engage in redrawing these maps as will be explained on the next slide. So next slide, please. Okay, so there's a, a lot of information to unpack with this slide, but I wanted to point out two particular areas. What the slide tells us is the population deviation. So it compares the lowest to the highest district based on the mean population, which you can see the, the mean population is listed as the ideal population. So given that the total population of the district has about 355,000, the ideal population for each one of these divisions would be around 71,000. So given that ideal population number, we compared the highest, the district, the division with the highest population number and the division with the lowest population number. And after comparing those mean, comparing that to the mean, the total deviation is about 19.65%. And if you recall from the initial presentation regarding population deviation, basically anything under 10% is typically okay. There is some case law that has allowed in very specific circumstances, a population deviation of up to 15%, but ultimately, we're, the population changes showcase a deviation that's almost twice the limit that we're going to have to be under. So in, in essence, the district is going to have to redraw maps in order to account for this population percentage change. And regarding some of these other columns here, this is the, the second point that I wanted to point out. So this chart here analyzes the citizen voting age population, so CBAP of specific ethnic groups. You'll notice that for districts four and five, it shows that Hispanics are the largest CVAP blocks, a CBAP block, specifically they're over 50% of the district. So those are minority majority districts that are going to have to be taken into account as maps are redrawn. Next slide, please. So, you know, just to, to provide a, a slide that, you know, just goes over that explanation. So total deviation is above 10%, which is the acceptable range. So, you know, we're at 19.65%, so the maps are going to have to be redrawn. Under the, the Federal Voting Rights Act, you know, drawing majority minority districts are required if it's possible. Based on the data that was released, drawing majority minority districts are possible under these circumstances, given that districts four and five are already majority minority Hispanic districts. So that's going to have to be taken into account when these maps are redrawn. So just a, a long-winded explanation of stating that the maps are going to have to be redrawn and, and we're have to go through the, the complete process here. Next slide. So in terms of considerations for aspects that are going to have to be weighed in when these maps are redrawn, there's quite a bit, as was discussed on that earlier slide. Again, one of the most overriding considerations is getting it to substantially equal population. Again, that's where that 10% population deviation number comes in. And you also want to be concerned that the, the maps are geographic, will be contiguous. So we don't want any enclaves of one district located within another district. You want to make sure that they're geographically compact. So we don't necessarily want a, a super long and skinny district broken up in a certain way, want it to be relatively centralized because the overwhelming thought about that is if it's, a district is drawn in a very centralized manner, that encompasses a lot of constituents who would have very similar goals and would want similar representation. And of course, the, everything's going to have to be measured, measured objectively to, to avoid any potential concerns with all these laws. Next slide, please. So this is where this communities of interest topic gets broken in and as, gets brought in. And as I mentioned earlier, this is a, a term of art that can encompass a significant amount of factors. So this first one are physical boundaries. So natural, artificial barriers, you know, your roadways, your rivers, your railways, parks, schools, et cetera. So in terms of something that could be a, a good physical boundary would be the 10 freeway might be a, a area where lines would be drawn as just a very natural marking delineation line. And then of course, the, the geographic integrity that goes into those other aspects where, you know, making sure it's contiguous, making sure that these districts make sense being drawn and where, makes sense where they're being drawn. And again, the minority voice, you know, with those requirements for majority minority districts, that is also a very important consideration to be, to be brought in here. Next slide, please. And again, other community, communities of interest, the political boundaries, you know, school attendance areas, you know, as we are special districts, the special district service areas, federal, state, county divisions. So for instance, you know, comes up where a special district might be, have a little enclave or a portion that's located in a different county, in some circumstances, it, it might make sense to ensure that that district includes all those, all that population from a different county. Just, just more, just, you know, and more to add to the rolodex of analysis here. And next slide, please. And so communities of interest, what they're not though, is assigning districts based on political affiliations, want to avoid the issue of gerrymandering. You know, it's very, very hot button issue, just want to completely avoid that. And incumbents residences. So not necessarily community of interest in, in that case as well. Next slide, please. So we have this slide broken out here for, for discussion points and after I, I go over this, this might, this will be a, a good area where if the board has any initial concerns regarding specific areas to be taken into account as we prepare the initial draft maps, which are going to, we have the first public hearing scheduled for January 11th. So in terms of conducting public outreach, you know, we want to work together with staff to inform the public how they can participate. Again, the first public hearing is on January 11th and, you know, we want to ensure that the public can speak on to this issue and have an opportunity to, to participate in. And, you know, we want to present issues like, you know, what's the neighborhood, what's the boundaries, what, is there a potential historic minority community located on a significant road struck, significant road that potentially can be split in half if we use that road as a boundary, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, just something to, to think about, the, the noble areas, you know, are there any schools within the jurisdiction where we should be endeavoring to, to make sure that people attending, that have attendance in that school are all located in the same district because they have the same needs due to their, you know, geographic proximity and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, with, with that being said, I'm open to, to any input that the, the board might have regarding any particular areas of concern.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just, I guess as, as a request, as we start getting into the conversation of the maps and potential delineations, it seems like, you know, I, I wasn't part of this, this process when it last happened, but I think at least two of the board members here might have been. But back, I think, and back in 2012 for around that time, it was when the district went back to, or when the district first started to basically have elections by division rather than at large, there seems to have been a process. I don't know how long that process took, but there was a process that changed the delineation of the divisions. And I'd like to, as a, as a conversation started, at, at least get a sense of what we did back then, why we did it, maybe as a starting point. Because I, I don't, I don't really understand how we ended up with, with those particular divisions back then. I do know that they, they look very different. One of the things that I recall as a community member back then, that was maybe paying attention to the way the divisions were going to end up being drawn up was that there seemed to have been, at least there was two, two divisions that were kind of being split down the middle. One of them kind of went all the way to the Salt and Sea on one side, the other one went on the other side and now it's all combined as, as Division Five. And, and I know that at least back then, I had heard some comments about some community, you could call it, just concerns about how that division ended up kind of being combined into one seat. And so again, just for purposes of having done understanding what we did back then, maybe, maybe there's a reason why we did it, maybe we end up doing it again that way. But if we could, I don't know, Jim, if...
Sure, I, I can probably do that rather quickly. The district was under threat of litigation to change from at-large to by-division elections. And when we went to by-division elections, we had to change how we configured the divisions so that previously we were equal by area, but under the, the new rules, we had to be equal by population. And working through the different municipalities, we tried to stay as close as we could to municipal boundaries or areas of interest for those municipalities. It was pretty complicated when we got to India being the largest city by population in the valley, but the reason why there were no longer two divisions in the Salt and Sea area is because the population just wasn't that great.
So I'll, I'll say that, you know, and you tell me, but by just looking at your presentation and looking at everything, because we have two majority minority districts and that besides the equal population that we're at 19, we need to get that down to 10 or under, there, there isn't huge changes that, that I can see that need to be done. or under, there isn't huge changes that I can see that need to be done.
On the markets.
Right. Is that correct? I mean, we don't, we don't have to redo this whole, whole thing like a lot of other places have to.
Jeremy, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, you know, that'll just be, you know, for, for, when dealing with that,
not necessarily have to, you know, completely blow up all of the divisions, you know, it might be some very minor adjustments just to make sure that the population is relatively equal in size between the divisions. And, and again, it's just making sure that the population is equal in light of all these other considering factors. And, and so, you know, I don't necessarily anticipate that this is going to be a significant redrawing of the maps. And again, as we draft, start drafting the maps after this presentation and give them to the, to the board in January, we'll have a few options. So I'm assuming that, you know, we'll, we'll draft a potential, let's say, the most typical amount is about three options to go with. And, you know, all those will probably be very minor adjustments to the existing boundaries just, just to make sure everything's taken into consideration.
And just to explain, it's not best, best, and crude, you're drawing the maps. We have a actual demographer.
Yeah.
Yeah, who's doing it, so.
That's under contract.
Right. And under contract, it was not Jeremy in his office with a legal pad doing something.
Or you, Jeff.
Yeah.
So I'm going to be very fair no matter what direction we're going in.
And so if you look, if you look at the chart, you can see where Jeremy mentioned that the, the increase in population came in District Four, which had an increase of the two, you know, the deviation out is nine thousand four hundred and twenty-one. So a total population of eighty thousand, which makes it significantly more than the other districts. So I'm assuming the demographers will look at that and find a way to add a little to, I don't know, District Five, maybe Three, to help balance that out. And depending on how those boundaries are adjusted, there may be a need or not to adjust, you know, the boundaries for Division One and Two. So it...
It's just not what I'm, my point was is this is not going to be a huge.
Yeah, it's just a small.
It's just a small thing.
Yeah.
And the big point is that we are, we have two majority minority districts, and that's what they're trying to accomplish.
Yes, that's correct.
When we, when we did this in 2012. Sorry. When we did this in 2012, a lot of these same priorities were involved, the population, the, the majority minorities, they were, they were involved. And that was all taken into consideration. So, you know, to your point is that it looks like, you know, out of Division Four...
Missed it a good shot.
Legwork, you've already built it.
Yeah.
So now it's just about shifting.
Balancing, yeah.
We're ahead of your time.
Yeah.
The other thing we have to keep in mind is the county voter registrars' areas. So they're not changing precincts.
So we, the county usually does ask, the registrar's office will ask that you try and stay to the extent possible with their existing boundary or their divisions for elections, because the last thing you want, it happens sometimes, but you don't want to separate a small area and have them going to different poll sites. It just creates a lot of confusion for voters. So we do keep that in mind and trying to stay within those boundaries and polling locations.
And ten percent deviation is, you know, you can work within that.
We can.
Doesn't have to be zero.
Yeah.
So is that...
Yeah, you know, exactly. And, and, you know, with, with that being said, you know, again, it seems like there's probably going to be some minor adjustments, you know, based on what the demographers will work up. And again, we'll have options to present on January eleventh of next year.
So do you have anything else, Jeremy?
Yes, yes, I do. We have a bit of a presentation regarding the timeline, if you can bring that back up. So, next slide. So, you know, we, we mentioned this a little bit earlier, but, you know, the sources of information for, for drawing maps, the demographic data naturally, staff expertise, public input, et cetera, there's a lot that goes into this. Next slide, please. So timeline, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the census data was delayed quite significantly. So the state released, released the prisoner adjusted census data on September twentieth, 2021. In terms of special districts, special districts are relatively lucky in that the newly enacted Fair Maps Act, the Fair Maps Act does not apply to special districts. So you just need two public hearings before the board to vote on a proposed final boundary map, you know, compared to cities which have four public hearings and a whole slew of additional requirements. One thing I do want to note, though, is that, that's different from the initial presentation made back during the summer, is that the date for final submission to the registrar of voters changed. So one of the, the issues that was being presented with the COVID-19 pandemic regarded redistricting deadlines, so certain special district types, I think, fire protection districts had originally had a November first deadline for completing this whole process, which naturally was an issue if the data wasn't released until September twentieth. So in an effort to head off that issue, the legislature just moved the date for every special district to April seventeenth, 2022, which meant that the, our final deadline has been moved up about a month, but there's still plenty of time to conduct this whole process and, and plenty of flexibility in the schedule to completely finish this. Next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, after today's meeting, we're going to spend the, the next bit of time, next few weeks or month or so, working with our demographer and with staff on drawing draft maps, which are in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act and the California Voting Rights Act. Next slide. Okay. And so then for the actual timeline here for CBWD, you notice that November ninth, this is the information meeting to reintroduce the topic of redistricting. So over this next few week period, BB and K with our demographers prepared draft maps using the 2020 census data. And then we have the first public hearing scheduled for January eleventh, 2022. And this is where the board will consider and provide input on the draft maps to see if there's any potential issues or if there's any sort of specific boundaries you want to be drawn, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So then we're going to hold the second public hearing on March eighth, 2022. And as you know, that there's a lot of flexibility built into this schedule. So based on the level of public input after the first hearing, you know, we can potentially add in an extra hearing if that's what the board wants in order to address certain issues. But for now, we're going to, we have it, technically scheduled for two hearings. And then, so that March eighth date would be the date for the second public hearing and for the board to adopt the map. Again, there's the April seventeenth deadline. But the, the way this is worked out is by design, which is just in case some sort of last minute issue comes up, that there's, you know, a little less than a month to potentially reconvene with the hearing to get this adopted. Again, just a lot of flexibility here, but there's plenty of time to complete this whole process. But with that, I think that's the, the end of my presentation, and I'm open for any more questions if the, if the board has any.
I'm not seeing any. President Powell?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I have one, I just have one more comment, Jeremy. I know you said that incumbents residences were not a community of interest, but the process does allow you to respect the location of the current board members in their division, correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. It can't be the main consideration, but it's one of the many factors that go into the redrawing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So this is a report, and thank you very much, Jeremy, for that. And if there's any other questions, if not, we will proceed on this schedule.
Let's move to nine H.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, so I think...
Thank you.
Who reports on this, Jim? Do you give a report?
This, this would be me, Mr. Vice President, and just for the Brown Act purposes, I need to make a couple disclosures. This item deals with the general managers' employment agreement and the payment of an incentive compensation for 2021 performance goals. The board can consider approving a discretionary bonus in the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight oh seven for meeting a certain percentage of the 2021 performance goals under the Sixth Amendment to the Employment Agreement. If the board elect to take such action, then pursuant to the requirements of Government Code fifty-four nine five three C three, prior to taking action, the following report is hereby being made. One, that the Sixth Amendment to the Employment Agreement provides the general manager will be eligible for a, a bonus of between zero and ten percent of the base salary. Two, the performance goals for 2021 are attached to the Sixth Amendment. Three, during a performance evaluation, the general manager of the board determined that the general manager met nine percent of the maximum, ten percent of the available 2021 performance goals. And four, nine percent of the base salary equals the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight oh seven. And finally, any incentive compensation that is approved would be paid in 2021. So the recommendation stands to approve this bonus based on that explanation.
And I'm going to make a motion to approve and then open it for comments, open it for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Any other comments? I know we've, we've talked about this already. President Powell?
No, I appreciate working with Jim, and I think it's the right number.
I agree. Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, there's a motion, there's a second.
Excuse me, I'll just make sure that we have no comments from any of the attendees online. If, if there are any comments, please use the raise hand feature.
Was my wife on there?
There is an anonymous person on here. Seeing none, I don't see a request from any member participating, so no comments.
Do we have to...
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote?
Yeah.
I apologize. Do we want to vote on this? President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
That passes five zero.
Thank you very much, and I do want to, again, express my appreciation to the staff for the support that they've given me during this last evaluation period.
And thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to board comments and reports. We'll start at the end with Director Nelson.
Hmm, no comments this morning.
Director Aguilar?
No comments.
No comments. President Powell?
No.
Okay, no comments for me. So we're going to move on to meetings and conference reports. There's quite a few from Director Nelson here, at least the first seven.
Yeah, I missed. I missed last meeting. I, I actually, last meeting, I was going to be in Vegas and my flight got canceled, so I was sat on Zoom call, and, and so I did have some time, and I, I tuned into the CBWD meeting, and you guys did pretty well last week in Coachella. So the item number one, October thirteenth, that was a, a meeting in preparation for the Congressional Subcommittee Water, Oceans, and Wildlife testimony, and it was going over the platform usage discussions with the, the Subcommittee Congressional staffers and coordinating with that fellow presenter there. So that was on the thirteenth. And on the fifteenth was the actual oral testimony, and that was on a Zoom platform. And I, I gave testimony that had been worked through a number of the contractors on the Colorado River and with the, with the Colorado River Board. I was limited to five minutes, so I had to speak real fast. And I thought it went well, answered some questions, talked about the Salt and Sea and the importance of that, and addressing that from a federal level because of their land ownership in the area. So I, I thought the, I thought it went fairly well. There were a couple follow-up questions that the CRV and were working on with Matt and IID specifically about the Salt and Sea. Then, so that was October fifteenth. And then the next one on October eighteenth was a Lower Basin States meeting. We worked on the five hundred plus plan. I don't know if you guys have, are informed on that, five hundred plus. So that's a plan for the Lower Basin to address additional conservation amounts of water in addition to the DCP. So under the DCP, under the shortage level one, there's a total of six hundred and thirteen thousand acre feet of conservation that has to take place to be kept in Lake Mead. So Mexico's about forty thousand, Nevada's nine thousand, California's none, and Arizona takes the brunt of that as the junior priority. So, so in addition to that, the Lower Basin States, California, Arizona, and Nevada are looking to save an additional five hundred thousand acre feet in 2022 and five thousand, five hundred thousand acre feet in 2023. And to do that, the states are looking to have a budget, a hundred million dollars to do that. So it's going to happen pretty fast, and the state legislature of Arizona has already put up forty million dollars. It's been talked about that Matt would come up with a number. So twenty million dollars has been thrown out there. It's not gone to their board, it's all, you know, in the works. And then Nevada would come up with another twenty million, and then, I'm not sure where the other twenty comes from. But, but we did, but we did...
A million acre feet for a hundred million dollars?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so that's only a hundred dollars an acre foot.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a challenge, it's a working project, process. And so, so with that, knowing that, we made a ask of the federal government to chip in another hundred million dollars to make it two hundred dollars an acre foot. So that's in the works. That may be, that money may be available through the infrastructure bill that's, you know, getting passed in Washington, there's a lot of money in there. It's vitally important because as a number of these meetings as we're going through is that the bureau is getting much more realistic about what the, what the hydrology is by getting rid of the older wet hydrology and only focusing in on the last twenty years of hydrology, which is really driving up the possibilities of Lake Mead getting below ten fifty, below ten thirty, and hitting ten twenty. And we're really trying to protect lake levels ten twenty because that's, that's the power pool, that's, you know, the dam safety, it's, there's a lot of issues there. So we're trying to protect the ten twenty. So, so with that, that's the, with that meeting on the, let's see, the meeting on the eighteenth was the Lower Basins kind of getting that, that plan together. Matt's engaged, IID's engaged, they're hoping to use some of the flexibility that was gained through their recent lawsuit settlement of the DCP to use as some of that water for contributing back to the lake. So that was on the eighteenth. On the twentieth, there was day two of the testimony, so Matt gave some testimony, IID gave some testimony, as well as Taylor Hayes with the Nature Conservancy, Pat O'Toole with Farming Group, Tom Deos from Arizona, and Man Castle. So that, there were less, there were, there were more, I think, congresspeople involved on day one. Day two was, though, still, still kind of important there. And then on the twenty-second, we had a Lower Basin States conference call that was after the testimony and gearing up for the Seven Basin States meeting on the, on the twenty-sixth. So that, that's just the principles there, so the seven states. That same day, later that day, I attended Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition meeting, and that, that meeting was talking about our renewals. We had... We had significant renewals, we had 86 of 88 growers renew into the coalition. The coalition is doing the reporting to the, to the Regional Quality Control Board to, for monitoring of, um, for the basin plan. And so there are a number of small growers that have not been, have not joined, and so there've been a letter reaching out to them. And so I would imagine at some point, the State Board's gonna get a list from somewhere and start contacting them. Uh, let's see.
I would hope so.
Yeah, I would hope so too, yeah. And then, so let's see, that was on the 22nd. On the 25th, the Farm Water Coalition meeting was canceled, so I didn't attend that one. And then on the 26th was the Seven Basin States. And that's where we presented the 500-plus plan and requested the money from, from the feds. So that was the one I attended on Zoom. And there was a lot of technical discussion about the models. It went on for two hours on the technical discussion of the models. And, I mean, Robert asked some good questions, but it was, it was a challenge. The challenge is that the, as I see it, is the Lower Basin and the Upper Basin have very different views of how to go about addressing the dry hydrology. The Lower Basin is, is showing, I think in my mind, a large amount of leadership and going out and saying, this is what we're gonna do, this is how much it's gonna cost. And the Upper Basin wants to talk about the models and how the model works. And granted, they're, they're in a different situation where they don't know how much ring they're gonna get and how much to divide out, but they've done no work on demand management, on managing the demand from their upper states. They're accusing the Lower Basin of, of never having to take a cut and never having to conserve water. And the reason why we haven't had to take a cut is we, we invested so much money in conservation, so we'd saved the water. And, and there's a, there's a, in my mind, a sorely lack of leadership in the Upper Basin that is going to be effectual in saving the Lake Powell elevations, which would be their responsibility. So, so that was mostly that discussion that day.
Groove is gonna be fun.
Groove is gonna be fun, yeah.
Yes.
Let's see, um, so that's the Seven Basin States, and that concludes my meetings here.
Okay.
I think we got some more.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the 27th. That was our two-on-two with the City of La Quinta. The President Powell and myself were in attendance. We went over the usuals, looking at, getting a look at the amount of meters that have been given out as a way to gauge development. We talked a little bit about the road leading to Lake Wia. It sounds like the city's wanting to repave that road. And they-
Get it done? I mean, it's December 5th, right?
Well, I'm not sure.
I'm not in charge of that, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's La Quinta.
I haven't been out there, but we did process the permits expeditiously, so I think they were looking at a shared funding, but they already had an estimate, so I'm sure-
And it looks like they were able to pencil it out. I think, yeah, it sounds like the city of Indian Wells, La Quinta, and possibly the County of Riverside are gonna pitch in to take care of it. So, so in general, that's what we spoke about. President Powell, you wanna add anything?
Uh, yeah, that's right. Lake Wia, Silver Rock Trilogy, the Wade Park, and IID.
That's right.
Nothing really new.
Recurring themes. All right, so moving on to October 28th. I showed up in the middle of the meeting just because I had a conflict, so when I, when I showed up, you guys were in the middle of that presentation from KDI, talking about how they wanna perhaps work on some amenities around the sea, like trails and parks, et cetera, so.
That was the main presentation, besides going over our financial reports and our state, local, federal.
Updates.
Updates.
Okay. So nothing more than just that KDI presentation, it sounds like. And then moving to the next meeting on the 28th, Director Aguilar?
Yeah, so good meeting with city staff, senior staff, and Jim and Carrie and Katie. There's renewed interest from the city and from some members in a couple of the neighborhoods on doing a new project to convert to sewer. And we discussed next steps and provided them, I believe, as an updated plat maps and for, for future discussion.
Thank you. Next meeting that same day, Legislative Committee meeting, Director Aguilar and myself. It was our typical legislative update with our lobbyists, Chris Kahn, Victoria, Katie, and other staff. And we went over the legislative report, just a list of bills that, that we're watching, supporting, et cetera. Not only that we go over the state legislature bills, but also the fens. On the state side, the big one that we're keeping an eye on is the one that has to do with compliance as it relates to MCLs. I think we're interested in that because of the Chromium six issue. And we're happy about the no wipes down the-
Pipes.
No wipes down the pipes. It sounds like there's a similar effort on the fence side. But other than that, Director Aguilar, can you recall?
No, no, I think that's fine. I would just add that we did agree to send a lot of support for HB4602, which is a federal version of the flushable wipes legislation, and, and that was it.
Okay, thank you. Next is November 4th. Director Aguilar?
Uh, yes, so very interesting. Of course, this is all done virtually. It was about a three-hour tour of the Central Valley infrastructure. For me, actually, the most interesting piece of the presentations was the issue of subsidence. Apparently, there's considerable sinking of land underneath the canals, which is caused by obviously the hydrology conditions and how to deal with that. It's a billion dollars' worth of improvements required, and, and it's a huge issue. So I was, I was, I realized that, you know, in some ways, we're pretty lucky. We don't have those severe issues as they do in the Central Valley, but it was, it was startling to hear. And that's it.
I always think of that picture that we show where the guy is like next to the, next to like a power pole or something. It's like the famous picture they show you also.
In 1977, it dropped 40 feet.
Yeah, something like that. Okay, any other meetings?
Yeah, I have, I have two more. On the 28th, I attended virtually California Water Commission Groundwater Trading webinar, talking about grower-to-grower groundwater trading. And I thought it was, I thought it was interesting in the light, trying to plan ahead, so to speak. And, but also, there was a segment about the State Water Board trying to be supportive of disadvantaged communities in terms of stigma and where they have issues with, you know, lack of water. So that was a very interesting conversation. And then on the 29th was another Basin States Principals meeting. We talked about tribal involvement in, in the process of the 1026 renegotiations, as well as the 1030 kind of response to the hydrology. So that was the main topic of conversation there, how to include them in a, in a significant way.
Thank you, any others?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I did sit in on the webinar that was dealing with the declining levels of Lake Mead and responsive actions, and heard about the 500,000 acre-feet proposal, and heard a lot about modeling in that meeting. That was very confusing, very confusing.
Yeah, they're really, actually, that was on the 5th or the 7th? I, I attended that as well, and there's one page, there was one sheet in there that has three graphs, and I'll try and get that and, and send it to you and say, these are the three graphs that are the most important. It's, it's pretty confusing, but I think, I think the long and short of it is with the look back at the drier hydrology period, it's really increasing the chances of, you know, low lake.
Yeah, I was also impressed by, had it not been for conservation, how much worse the problem would be.
Yeah.
Any other meetings? President Powell?
No.
Okay, I have one meeting on November 1st, meeting with the county supervisor and staff to discuss projects in the East Valley that can facilitate the building of additional housing. We've been working as, as a district with several affordable housing folks, including the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, who's kind of asked us to help them understand where there might be some availability for additional housing. I think the county is also thinking about perhaps sending out proposals so that they can get a housing developer to create more housing options in the east side, but understanding that we have some limitations with our supply and that we're working on several projects, a lot of which we are chasing grant funding for, that really sometimes impacts the ability for us to move on projects, you know, sooner because of those schedules. The county seems to believe that they have ARPA funding, which can be specifically used for infrastructure, particularly water and sewer projects.
What kind of funding?
ARPA.
ARPA.
American Rescue, American Relief.
That, I don't know, ACT is the last A.
ARPA, okay.
Anyways, a lot of cities and counties are receiving that funding. It's one-time money. It was really made available to try to help alleviate the economic impacts that were, that resulted because of the coronavirus. So it's part of the Coronavirus Relief Act, or it's part of that money. But they are aware, because of the conversations that we've had about our projects, that there's a project that we're working on is the rehabilitation of the IXP plant down in the Mecca area, that if we were to rehabilitate, could potentially open up, you know, our ability to serve, let's say, anywhere from 200 to 400 additional units. And so, understanding that we're in the process to apply for grant and funding to try to get that construction money, but it might take, you know, two years from now or however long it takes, perhaps they have an interest to make those monies available for purposes of expediting that project. So, and I think it's a good project just because it's about 95% complete in design, so it's just a matter of securing the dollars to get going on it. So, so hopefully, that's gonna, you know, that's something that they're gonna move forward on. I think we're waiting to hear from them, and so I think we're just on hold right now. But that was the meeting for that. And if there's no other meetings, is there a motion to approve, or DM?
Make a motion, second.
If there's no other comments, can we get a roll call?
Sure. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, passes five zero.
Thank you. And then moving on to staff reports, General Manager?
Yes, sir. Just quickly, 119 recovered COVID cases, three current, two direct, so we've got five off work. Staff continues to work through with the bargaining units on the discussions related to the CBWD vaccine policy. I think you all have been keeping up with the news reports that basically talk about the mandate from the White House. The deadline's been extended from December 8th to January 4th. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you, Council?
Yes, I wanted to report, there was a request from Director Nelson for an update or explanation of the State Water Board water rights permit fees case and why that is no longer a viable option to, to challenge those fees. The validity of those fees was finally determined by a Court of Appeal in, in 2018. The bottom line is that the Court of Appeal held that the water rights fees imposed on water rights holders were not an unlawful tax and instead were a valid regulatory fee. Well, what does that mean? Well, that means there's a lower standard for regulatory fees to be approved or to be authorized by the state. The court concluded that the issue was whether the fees allocated to the payers of those fees, such as the district, whether those fees were reasonable and substantially proportionate to all costs related to the regulation of those fees, and the court said yes. So in CBWD's case, of course, as you know, there are permit fees paid for water rights that are not regulated by the State Board, namely, the Colorado River. But this court holding said that unless there is a, a substantial or disparity between the fees that are imposed and the work being done by the State Board, the court was not gonna overturn those permit fees. So in essence, the court's saying, yes, maybe that's not a large percentage of what the State Board does, but the State Board does enough other things that they do have the authority over that the court is not gonna overturn the regulatory fees. Not a desirable outcome, not necessarily a reasonable outcome. That is the basis upon which our advice and through Steve Bigley has been not to challenge those further. In theory, we can make the argument that this is an example of where there is that disparity, but the cost and benefit analysis of challenging that in court, especially after the Court of Appeal case, would be slim. Thank you, sure.
Thank you. Any department reports? Jim?
Yes, sir. ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. I don't know how much money was involved, but it covers quite a bit of stuff.
It was a lot of money, but it went to the cities and counties.
Counties, right, not, no special.
No special districts. Thank you. With that, we're moving to closed session. We'll be back. No reportable actions, and meeting is adjourned at 12:23 PM. Thank you.
But John, two, two question, yeah, I mean, because it's pending litigation, anything else?